Welcome to tonight's study session for April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Hope everybody has their taxes in. If not, rush out whenever you need to and get them done. Welcome to the Westminster City Council Study Session for April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and the threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles nor shall the doorways be blocked. City Council reports.
I do want to say, so I've been visiting senior facilities throughout the city and wanted to just give everyone I've been speaking to at those places a big thank you for all their ideas. They are, they're really helpful. It's very optimistic when I meet with them and they're hopeful that we will be focusing on their needs. So just want to give a shout out to all those older residents in our city that we care for you and we listen and we hear you.
And we saw your picture today that you sent us. Counselor Hutt?
I don't have one report this week.
Okay.
I spoke to some residents over the weekend about the RMMA CMR IGA discussion and got a lot of great information and so I thank them for doing so much homework. I'm bringing it up to say that we know that there's a meeting coming up on the second that has a decision about dissolving the IGA which we discussed last week. And I was not aware that the Attorney General might have some information or might be involved on the airport issue and they let me know that. And so I wanted to find out a little bit more about next steps in case the IGA did dissolve. And so I reached out to Phil Weiser. I have a, he has fantastic turnaround and so I have a meeting with him tomorrow or with someone from his office to find out more information. And I reached out to Brittany Pedersen as well, our Congresswoman. And so anyway, it's really motivated me to try to find out what the next steps might be in case the, in case certain actions are taken soon, right? And so I want to make sure that we're best prepared for our upcoming executive session and any decisions that we have to make. So I will update everyone as soon as I have some more information from folks. But just been in gathering mode since folks have reached out. And I had some ideas depending on the information I get about perhaps in our executive session involving the Attorney General with Mr. Frankel and, you know, having some discussions about what if we made a new IGA, which is my personal hope is if it dissolved, I would still want us to be in communication with the community. What would that look like? How would it be different, et cetera? And so from a legal perspective, what, what are the next steps? I think we need to be prepared for that in the case that that comes our way. So it's just landed in my lap and so here we are. So I'll update everyone. And then I know I wasn't present for the housing assessment discussion last week. I'm so glad we had that. I've been looking forward to it and I think we got some really good results from it. I just wanted to say that the HNA suggestions, it seems that our current strategy's comprehensive plan runs contrary to the suggestions of more infill and density. And so I think that we might want to take a look at that if we're going to take the housing assessment plans seriously. And we might also want to take a look at our review for development, the process. Just like, just taking a look at the whole process. How can we, if we're going to take these suggestions seriously, how do we make actions faster as a council? And I just want to bring up that I think it'd be a really good idea to take a look at our review process to see how can we streamline things to get decisions made if we're going to make the actions that the HNA suggested. That's everything.
And to go with your RMAA stuff, I saw Devin Schaaf someplace in my travels last week. And Broomfield did not get their resignation in soon enough. So he will be chairing the meeting in May. Counselor Ireland?
I did listen into the AdCog meeting. I was a little late to it because I had to teach later than I thought. But they were mostly talking about the transition from Highway eighty-nine to one hundred and twentieth. They got federal funding, they'll be transitioning and making, doing the transition to those two main roads. That was the biggest thing I heard. I did go to the Castle Light, Light of Hope luncheon and so did Counselor Hutt. Mayor McNally, very nice, a very inspirational speaker, I thought. Her name's Melissa Rashad. You can look up her online, but she is just an incredible woman. She was in twenty-three foster homes in her life and made, made something of herself. So it was really impressive. And that's it for this week.
Counselor Numa, any mayor pro tem?
Not too much, other than the...
Not after cog this week?
Oh, this week.
Or the last week?
I know I have it. Oh, my gosh, sorry. Pull my notes out. No, yeah, last week it was just the...
Week off.
Yeah, the strategic planning session. So, and I did get contacted by the same group of folks that are wanting to meet on the RMMA. So I am trying to schedule something with them too. So I'll be interested in hearing what you're able to find out. I think that is important for us to know what our options are outside. If that is no longer, if the CNR is no longer available. And then I would just say, one of the things that DOLA, just switching over to housing, DOL just released their, or they will be releasing guidance on the fast, not fast track, but the, and the quicker administrative review for affordable housing projects if you're part of Prop one twenty-three. So that'll be something that I know our staff will be evaluating. And that's just specifically for affordable housing, not for everything. So I know that will be a lift for our staff regardless because just trying to get those projects through in a timely manner will be some work.
I had the Who's Cap meeting last, I think we did it Tuesday. We went out to the site and it gives you pause to think about what all is happening. And, and then we had this meeting. We had them back to back within less than a week because we're not having another one until, I think, May first. So this past one, they started looking at, I forget how many things they had that we have to get through, but we only got through one. So they've already added an extra meeting. So I know some were concerned they weren't going to have enough. And trust me, they, I don't know if they can do it in two meetings that are left. But they started working on stuff. There's a lot more, they have not gotten down to nitty gritty. So I don't know when they're going to do that. But good discussion. And I'm sure once we get into the nitty gritty of how it really should or could look, things will get a little bit more interesting. I had Northwest Mayors and Commissioners meeting, talked a lot about passenger rail.
Oh, that's what I did last.
And, and the bill that was coming through. And I shared with them, if you just go with that and cut our nose to spider face about the fast tracks and their peak-to-peak piece, we need to know what's happening with both because we could get left with absolutely nothing and we're still paying taxes for it. So Broomfield spoke up and they feel the same way. So we didn't take a position on that bill because obviously there were some that just were gung ho for the bill. And whenever we don't have consensus, we just don't take a position. Casa White was fantastic. The speaker was awesome. And I had my monthly RTD breakfast. There's that bill that's going through and we just have to ask ourselves, what is the state, what is in there that's not happening now? I mean, they have been turning a huge elephant and I believe their new CEO has done a yeoman's job. And they only get one percent of the state dollars. So I've asked this question publicly and they don't like it. But I've said, okay, so if you guys get this, so how much more money are you going to be giving to RTD? Because most successful transit agencies get twenty to thirty percent of their budget from the state. And they can't answer that because they say they don't have it. So I, we have four representatives between the Northwest Corridor and our NADA group. And you can ask on any given day, time and place and they will be there helping us. And so they are representatives. We know their faces and with the legislation they have going, a person would serve a million people. I don't think that is going to be very effective. So we talked about that and then we had Saturday, eight hours for strategic plan. We ate through, ate our way and talked our way through lunch. Everybody worked very hard. It was good. And then I think we had a forty-five minute break for those of us that went to Westminster Chambers Gala. It was the best ever, great food. I loved the dueling pianos. It was just fun and all the people that received their words, it was fantastic. City Manager?
Oh, can I just add for front range passenger rail? So last week there was a planning committee meeting and they're going over the station location criteria for secondary stations. And so it doesn't, so there, there has been a lot of work done on the, the lines, the analysis, the alternatives analysis of the lines themselves. But from what I can tell, there's not as much detail about the individual stations that they've, and look, you know, general locations that they've picked. And so I'm definitely curious to understand just, you know, as we look at forfeiting some of that, those peak rail dollars in the hopes that the front range rail will actually prove up the ridership if we don't have stations that are proving up that ridership. I do, so I, that ridership component and the analysis for that, I haven't seen that yet. So I know that the whole area that's between the north side of Denver to Boulder, we don't have a stop and there's hundreds of thousands of people in between those, those two stations. Some of the highest density, some of the most diverse demographics. And we're being passed by whether that's Broomfield, Arbada, Westminster, North Glenn, Federal Heights, all of these communities. So struggling.
And when you look at connectivity.
Yes.
Where the rail would be, we now have an underpass for them to get to the transit station for buses, which we have five hundred buses coming there a day. So if they don't pick that, there's nobody else that can top that.
Yes, and there, and there was discussion about just as secondary stations, if they have limited service, when does that happen in relation to them starting the north service? And then also filling out the south, the southern portion of the service? And then when might they integrate in secondary stations? So I, more to come on it. I'm still, you know, each meeting, I just sort of try and get an understanding of where they are, where the decisions have been made and where there might be room for some flexibility.
So locations have not been selected yet, basically?
The main ones.
The general.
Long as they're in Boulder.
Secondary stations, you'd have to, as a, as a city, you'd each have to prove it up, do an analysis, do the ridership theoretically. And all the other, like, is it zoned? So that's the type of criteria that is being developed right now.
And weren't you telling me part of Broomfield was tagged up with the G line?
I don't know if that was me.
Somebody told me that, I mean, they've got some weird things out there. So we have to pay attention because this, from two thousand and four on, we believed what they said. And we have three big TODs. And we can't let them go. We've put millions of dollars into those, millions. So, okay.
Do you have a staff member following this?
We have a transportation person, yes, that follows me to the meetings.
Get it, okay.
And we're with staffs.
Chris Chauvin?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilors, ladies and gentlemen that are in the audience here tonight, anybody who might be watching online, some updates from the city's perspective. So next slide, please. Mayor McNally asked me in an upcoming meeting to share with not only the council but the public what the Westminster Hills Open Space Decision Making Authority is. And so I just wanted to take a second, I'm going to read this verbatim because I don't want to be misquoted and I certainly don't want to be misunderstood because it's important stuff and it just kind of lays out, there's two slides and then we'll move on. But it's just sharing information. If you want to dive into it, the paragraph numbers and chapters are certainly there. But that first bullet really gets to the essence of what open space is and how we can use it. So I'll skip through the numbers if it's okay. But open space policy statement, this is important. "The objective of the Open Space Program is to promote quality of life for citizens of Westminster through the preservation and protection of the quality of the natural environment that has given Westminster much of its character." Moving a couple of chapters down to thirteen five three, "Preservation of land and other open space uses." So, so paragraph A, generally, "Lands acquired with open space funds shall be preserved and managed in a natural condition. Open spaces will generally be open for passive public use and enjoyment and trails will be developed where possible to provide access. Examples of compatible passive recreation include hiking, nature study and photography." And then subparagraph B, "Additional activities that may be allowed on certain open space property or portions thereof, after the city manager determines such activities will not have a detrimental effect on the natural qualities for which the open space was originally acquired, include fishing, biking, horseback riding, boating and the development of off-leash dog exercise areas, restrooms, trailhead parking lots and limited structures that enhance the passive recreational experience." And that's what allowed twenty years ago for that off-leash dog area to be established in the open space. Okay? Next slide, please. So then continuing first bullet, "Use Regulations at Off-Leash Dog Sites." And it goes on, "Notwithstanding the prohibition in subsection thirteen one five A eleven, which is above, the director, meaning the Parks, Rec and Library Director, is authorized to establish or discontinue off-leash dog park sites." And that's important because he's the one on my staff that is tasked with monitoring whether we're having any kind of detrimental effects on the open space. Next piece here, and this is important as we work through, where do we go from here with the community advisory team? Subparagraph A, "In certain cases, it may be determined by the city council that a property originally acquired for open space purposes may be better utilized for another public purpose, including but not limited to an active park. In such cases, the open space land acquisition account shall be reimbursed the current market value of the affected property at the time of its conversion or the cost of that land at the time of its original acquisition, whichever is higher." And so, you know, that's a potential council action as to how we designate land use in that open space. Important for everybody to understand, that is a council decision. No one else can make that decision. And it really resides in your authority to designate land use across the city. The last thing is just to clarify, because a lot of people are confused. The community advisory team, and we've been calling those CATs, was formed by the Parks, Recreation and Libraries PRL Director to provide input on the management of the Westminster Hills Open Space Off-Leash Dog Area. At the conclusion of this consultation process, the PRL Director will present management options to the city manager who will in turn then make recommendations to the city council for their direction. And what we're envisioning from a timeline perspective is the CAT finishes up, call it by mid-May at the latest. We come back to the council on the third of June and share with the council what those recommendations are on how we change that, if, if that's the recommendation. We, we're assuming the council's going to ask us to take that back to the, to the community and in an open forum of some sort, which we're scheduling for mid-June. And then as long as that, you know, doesn't receive major issue, we can bring that back to the council for some kind of decision or action item by the end of June. And so don't, really not trying to derail our study session tonight, but just wanted to make sure that everybody kind of understands decision authorities, kind of how we got here and where we can go, what the role of the CAT is. But again, Mayor McNally asked me to do that last Monday night. And given my unexpected absence, I wasn't able to share that with you, but wanted to do that. Lastly, we did share this last meeting with the folks that are on the CAT so that they have this information too. And so everybody's got the same information, okay?
I was, after the first meeting that we had publicly over at the City Rec Center, I even got confused with what they were saying. So I said, we need to put this in writing, show them exactly which pieces and parts, who makes decisions and how it's all going to come together so that everybody is clear and working off the same page.
All right, and thank you for that idea, Mayor. I think it's very appropriate. Next slide. And so now we'll get on with some city updates. So just FYI for the council, our fire department this week is going through its fire reaccreditation. The peer assessment team that comes from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, they came into town over the weekend and they've started with a kickoff meeting this morning. They'll do interviews, things like that over the course of the week, gather a lot of information and then go back, make their determination on the reaccreditation and then either accredit them or not. My assumption is that they'll be wonderfully accredited. But they'll be in town, like I said, until Thursday, conducting interviews and then work on their accreditation process. But that's a big deal in the fire department. And, you know, frankly, our police department has not been accredited previously. And so one of my tasks for the police chief is to get the department accredited. Generally, if you're in your start and it takes about three years to get down that process. And so Chief Horbert's working on it. But fire department's already been accredited and so we're going through the reaccreditation. Next slide. Westminster Arts Week, lots of information out there about this. It goes from April twentieth, that's next Saturday through the following Saturday. Celebration of makers, creators and artists across the community from the northern end of town all the way to Historic Westminster in the South. It is all about collaborative partnerships, which I think is, you know, one of those themes that came out of the strategic planning session this past Saturday. But, you know, working with North Metro Arts Alliance, Westminster Public Schools and their creative arts pipeline, the Palateers Art Club, Orchard Town Center, Firsthand Markets, and then thirty local businesses that are involved in this. And there's something going on every single day over that week-long period. So we invite the community and certainly the council to take advantage of those. If you want to find out some details on when and where, the link at the bottom will provide all of that. But a great event put on by our Parks, Rec and Libraries team. Next slide. So earlier this year, the council approved a, an improvement project in Historic Westminster, specifically those old dilapidated planter boxes that, you know, have dead trees and bushes and not much else in them all along Seventy-second Avenue. And there's a little bit on Federal and a little bit on Lowell Boulevard. And so that contractor got started today. And so those are starting to be cleaned out. They'll be reestablished with Xeric landscaping and some, some colorful drought tolerant type plantings. But should spruce up that part of town, project long overdue. If anybody wants to learn more, go to our city website at that link that's listed and find out what's going on. But very excited to see that kind of come to fruition here. Next slide. This past week, we held our first ever Pothole Palooza. We had our city streets team out there filling potholes across the city. We did ask for folks to submit essentially notifications to us of where the pothole is, you know, either by address or by a road intersection. We had over five hundred resident requests for potholes to be filled. Our street team was out there throughout the week last week. They filled two thousand seven hundred potholes and you know as well as I do, we got more to fill. But, but it was a great way to kick off the season. And amazingly, they used sixty-five tons of asphalt in one week. That's a lot of asphalt. So a big problem set for communities with the, you know, in the environment where, you know, you have to freeze thaw cycles like we do. But, but we're starting early and we'll stay on top of it over the course of the year. We did get great partnership support from Denver Seven, KDBR, the Westminster Window and Univision. They provided very, very positive and good coverage for us in the media. And then we also had some pretty good postings and then responses, reactions via social media. Next slide. And then for our communications team, they won three national awards here recently. We're notified of that. And so three blue pencil and gold screen awards for, first, the Westie Magazine, second, the two thousand twenty-three Water Quality Report, and then third, in the photography category. And that was done by the National Association of Government Communicators. In these past two years, so twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, the city has won seven national awards for the efforts that we do to inform, engage and excite residents about the community. And so kudos to Andy Le, and the Communications Division. Next slide. Some things to know, special permits and license meeting goes this Wednesday from seven to eight thirty PM right here in council chambers. The Great Global Cleanup is going on this weekend, Saturday, April twentieth, eight to one PM, various locations across the city. And again, to thank participants, there's a volunteer celebration barbecue. It will be at City Park Recreation Center from eleven AM to one PM on Saturday. And we encourage folks to come out, enjoy that. Lot of good information tables also if you want to learn more about the environment and sustainable efforts that folks can do, not only in their residence but also at their place of business. Westminster Arts Week, already mentioned that, Saturday to Saturday. And then our next city council meeting is Monday, next week, next Monday, beginning at six thirty right here. Next slide. No information, only items this evening. Next slide. And as always, we want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, accountable. If you want to get in contact with us, please do so. If you want to contact me or can't get in touch with the right person, please call me at three oh three six five eight two thousand six. Email me directly at mfritag@westminsterco.gov. You can follow us on Facebook, you can check us out on Instagram, you can like us on X or you can ring our bell at Nextdoor. Have any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Nextdoor says Trader Joe's is coming to town. Nextdoor to...
She's tight lipped.
Nextdoor to Barnes and Noble, so.
She's tight lipped.
I just thought I'd give that notice.
I have not heard that.
Quick question on the Pothole Palooza?
Yes.
What was the budget impact and how can we make it more? How, what's the plan to do more of those?
Well, if you remember, Counselor, two or three weeks ago, the council approved our annual asphalt budget, you know, which is not only used for potholes but also for roads. But I don't remember the exact amount. We can follow up with you on what that dollar amount was.
But just for the four days, I mean, do we have that number for... But just for the four days, I mean, do we have that number for what that cost?
This evening, but I can follow up on that. But, you know, it's a significant effort, and you know as well as I do that, as we've talked about, if you stay proactive in maintaining your asphalt roads, filling potholes, doing the crack sealing, doing the slurry seal, things like that, those asphalt roads will last a lot longer in these conditions than they will if you don't. And so, it's a proactive or a preventive measure. But I'll follow up with the dollar amount for last week's Poth-
Do we have any plans to do another one this year?
Not this year, no. But we're gonna do a second. Because of the success of this one, we'll do one next year pending budget authorization, certainly.
Thanks.
Real quick question, the day of the Great Global Cleanup, could I get from yourself or from Abby a real clean schedule of where we should be and when? Because I am committed three times over to being there with both the council and the environmental-
You haven't learned to duplicate yourself over and over.
Yeah, and with the Westminster Kiwanis Club. And so, we'll see where I can be if I need to be, you know, with council at certain times.
We can get that, we can get that information, absolutely.
Clarify something? Just to clarify on councillor's oddity's question. So the city will fix potholes year-round. So, if a citizen has a pothole that they have in their neighborhood, they can contact our Public Works Utilities Department, and that pothole will get filled. So, this was a special event this week to really go out there and blitz it. But I just want to emphasize that the city fixes potholes year-round.
What's the turnover for normal, a normal call that's outside of one of these blitzes?
Seventy-two hours?
Yeah, we can get back to you on that, but we strive to get out there in seventy-two or less hours.
Isn't that something we can push out more to the residents? Because folks thought that this was the only opportunity, and they were calling me like, "Oh, I missed it, I missed it."
We do it year-round.
Yep, anytime.
I can attest to that. Before I was on council, I would call and complain about a certain spot, and it would get cleaned up.
Okay, tonight, we have very special presentations with all three of our school districts. And I just want to say to all of you that are here tonight, you are one of the heartbeats of the city. We are lucky to have three school districts. And so, thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. And who's up first?
Yes, so Jeffco Public Schools actually is the one who initiated this. So, got an email from them asking to come update the council. And so, we said, "Perfect, let's do this." But let's also invite our other two school districts. And so, we appreciate everybody joining us this evening. We look forward to the presentations, and again, always appreciate the partnership. Okay? So, Tracy.
Welcome. Mr. Freitag, thank you. Mayor McNally, council members, thank you so much for having us. Mr. Andrews, it's nice to see you again.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tracy Dorland. I'm the superintendent for Jeffco Public Schools, and I'm with my colleague here. I'll let Jeff introduce himself.
I'm Jeff Gatlin. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Jeffco Schools. Thanks for having us tonight.
Yeah, so we have a bit of some information to share with you about the direction of Jeffco Public Schools in general, as well as some information specifically that we thought you all would be interested in around our property disposition process. We know it's on the minds of all of our cities in Jeffco, given the very difficult school closures that we've had to address. And so, let's start with the state of the district and where we are, and what we're doing and where we're heading. Next slide, please. This slide is a graphic visual of our strategic plan, Jeffco Thrives Twenty Twenty-Five. It starts with the vision, mission and values that our Board of Education has provided for us to be a thriving district where all students achieve their biggest dreams, and to provide a world-class education that prepares all Jeffco students for bright and successful futures locally and globally. Our board also has set five values for us to live by as we do our work with our community and with one another for students. And from there, the team built with our community a strategic plan that has four priorities. And those four priorities are in the green box. Our learners are future is number one, because that's what we do, right? We take care of students and make sure that they learn. Number two is our people are strength. We are one of the largest employers in Jefferson County, and we should not only be one of the largest, we should strive to be one of the best. So there are many strategies within our people are strength about how we maintain, recognize, recruit, honor the employees who choose to work for Jeffco Public Schools. And number three is our operations are foundation, which is all about efficiency and effectiveness in relation to how we operate everything from transportation to technology to our finances in the district. And then, finally, our communities are legacy, which is all about how we strategically partner. We, I'm a big fan of saying we can't do this alone. And very fortunately, in Jeffco, we don't need to, because Jeffco is very committed to its schools. And so, we're thrilled to be able to have some strategies in our plan around how we partner with many people outside of Jeffco Public Schools who care deeply about our schools. Within number one, the most important priority, our learners are future, we have two main areas of focus. One is a culture of instructional excellence, making sure that our students receive the best instruction they can on a daily basis to learn at high levels, and extraordinary student experiences. We all know the students who come to school for something other than English class, right? Maybe it's band, maybe it is the football field, maybe it's the stage. We have many students who thrive in areas outside the classroom, and we want to make sure that our students have extraordinary student experiences, not only in the classroom, but also outside of the classroom. And this year, we really have two things we're focused on. Student outcomes and central services in support of student outcomes. We have done a lot of work with our central services teams to make sure that the work they do on a daily basis is really focused on support to schools. And we've done a lot of work with our school leaders and our teachers around really just zeroing in on what do we need to do to make sure our students are achieving at the highest potential that they have. Next slide, please. So what does it mean to go from this vision to impact? I often get the question, you know, "Superintendent Dorland, what does it mean to you, Jeffco thrives?" And I really do feel that, at the end of the day, Jeffco is a leader, building a community of leaders. And we want all students to be able to lead in their schools, in their communities, in their own personal lives, and in the future workforce that they end up in. Next slide, please. And so, we are really excited to share some good news with you. We had twelve comprehensive high schools and seven of our charter schools who graduated students at a rate of ninety percent or higher last year, which is wonderful. We had a thousand students, right now, we have a thousand students enrolled in Jeffco's career and technical education programs. That was last year, sorry. This year, I think we actually have a few more than that. And more than fifty-five hundred students in Jeffco were concurrently enrolled in college classes, collectively earning over twenty-nine thousand college credits, and almost four and a half million in tuition savings for those students and their families. Just as a mom of a junior in high school, something that I think is really good news. I think she has a couple of these concurrently enrolled classes, which I'm like, "Make sure you go pass that AP test." And then, in twenty twenty-three, we had seven hundred and eighty-five students enrolled in a work-based learning course that included internships and apprenticeships. And it's something we are passionate about and really wanting to expand these types of real-world learning experiences that are very relevant for our students. Next slide, please. We have also implemented an approved comprehensive core literacy resource for reading and writing at the elementary level. We want our students to be strong mathematicians in an ever-changing, complex world. So, we are implementing new math resources. And those will be implemented fully across the board K-12 by twenty twenty-five. We have had to do the very difficult work of addressing enrollment declines. But it has allowed us to launch a more equitable student-based budgeting formula and be much more efficient and effective in terms of the use of our funds and the ability of those funds to provide for those extraordinary student experiences and instructional excellence in the classrooms. And then, of course, once the schools closed, we launched a property disposition process to build up our capital reserve and be able to reinvest funds that we might receive for disposing of properties into today's schools for students as we need to make sure that we continue to build, you know, warm, safe, dry and engaging learning environments for students. Three properties so far have been approved for surplus, and we'll have Mr. Gatlin share a little bit more about that process with you in a minute. Actually, I think it's your turn, Mr. Gatlin.
And actually, as of last week, it's up to seven now. Our board approved four more properties last week, two in Arvada and two in Lakewood, to go through this process. So it's a good transition to our property disposition process that maybe you've seen, maybe you're familiar with. I think is of particular importance for you and your interest in Zurgur, which is going through the process right now. WIT and Moore, those are the three, the three school properties that are possibly be considered for this. So for Zurgur, we are almost to the end of this kind of, you know, sneaky, multiple-layered process where we're in the final negotiation on a proposal for that site. So, we're hoping to bring an offer to the board to take formal action on as a next step. So, we've almost worked our way through this entire process, and that last light blue box, proceed with contract execution, is, will be the next step, assuming we can, we can come to agreeable terms. An update on Moore, we're actually looking to use that facility next year for a law enforcement pathway and a training center. So it would stay as an internal use for Jeffco. And I believe that we've actually been engaged with Commander Smith, might be on your team, about that partnership and just how our law enforcement agencies could use that as a resource. So that's planning for that. WIT, right now, we're just, we're planning on possibly surplusing that at a later date. I don't have a firm time to give you. I know there's particular interest for all of our school sites. As soon as we know more about the timing of that, we'll certainly let you know. But like I said, that wasn't one that was approved by the board last week to start this process. And I want to remind council that really when, when our board votes to surplus a school, that's really what kicks off this process. And that's really when the public engagement part of the process begins. And I think as evidenced with Zurgur, in one of the very first things we do, hold community meetings and then stand up an ad hoc committee that's specific to that site. So we've had a Zurgur ad hoc committee that's really been along for this process, that's reviewing pre-qualification documents, that's making recommendations, that's reviewing proposals, that's making recommendations. So just know that that will continue when our board votes to surplus sites in the future. And it's been a great way to make sure. We've had very interested citizens, as you can imagine, on those committees, and it's been great to have them be part of that and have input into the process and really be informed along the way. And the one last thing to point out, in that green box at the top, we've added a municipal interest process that if one of our municipalities and a municipal partner comes to us and says, "You know, we really have a strong interest in our property. We wanted to make sure that we had a process to follow," and you could go to the next slide, if that's okay, that we could have a process to follow that was transparent, that, you know, our board is aware of, that's been presented to our board and our community to make sure that we're being transparent around. If a municipality does say, "Hey, we're interested in that site, here's the process we're gonna follow." If a municipality doesn't express any interest, it's the previous process that we described. So just want to make sure that you were aware of that, too. It's been a little bit of a development in the past eight or nine months that's been included into the disposition process altogether. So, with that, turn it back over to Tracy.
Back to me?
Yep.
Okay, we, we've been talking within Jeffco quite a bit about how schools are funded to make sure that our community understands how this works, and also some of the challenges that the district faces in relation to its revenue compared to other front-range neighboring districts. So, you can think of school funding as a picture. I'll tell you a funny story. When I came up with this analogy, my husband, I shared it with my husband, and I had made this picture just from like, I don't know, Google Images. And he said, "I don't like the milk jug." And I said, "Well, I'm gonna try it, I'm precise anyway." And so, the communications team made it look a lot better. And a lot of people come up and say to me afterwards, "I really like the milk jug analogy." But I do know for a fact that some people don't. So you can let me know what you think after this meeting if you want to. But we, it is hard for people to understand how school districts receive revenue from the state of Colorado and from taxpayers. And one of the things that taxpayers often say to us is, "Well, my tax, my, you know, property taxes just went up, and so, aren't you getting all that money? What are you gonna do with all that money?" And we're trying to help people understand that that's not how it works. So you can see the three different components of how our revenue is made up in the picture, or the milk jug. The first one is our local funding. And that is twenty-seven mills in Jeffco raised by property tax collections. The state then backfills a portion to get us to our total program, which is what the legislature says we should have in terms of a per pupil amount. And if the local funding increases as property taxes increase, then the state decreases its backfill. So we don't get more in our total program. The only way we get more in our total program is to pass mill levy overrides. And Jeffco has historically passed some mill levy overrides. And we'll talk more about those in just a minute. Let's go to the next slide. You can see here some comparisons of front-range district funding. And across the top, you'll see the districts Jeffco, Denver, Cherry Creek, Boulder. You'll see the number of students served, the total program, which is the student, the per-student funding in the CDE school finance formula from the state. Then you'll see these additional voter-approved mill levy overrides and how much each community has in addition to Jeffco. And then you'll just see the percent of the voter-approved mill levy override in terms of its percent of our total district funding. So you can see very clearly in that third line down that Jeffco is receiving about eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred per student from local mill levy overrides, where our neighboring districts are receiving, you know, anywhere from three thousand to almost four thousand. And so, we're just receiving a lot less funds per student than our neighboring districts. About eighty-five percent, maybe a little bit more, of our entire budget is salaries. And so, what's happening is the fact that we are unable to keep up with neighboring districts with additional revenue is causing us a very difficult time keeping competitive with market-based salaries. Next slide, please. And so, we really have three challenges. We have had a budget stabilization factor at the state level that has, over the last fourteen years, been applied to the final number for districts and reduced our overall funding. We have lost out over the last fourteen years about nine hundred and thirty million dollars from state revenue since the inception of the budget stabilization factor. The state legislature is planning to buy that down this year. We're all very hopeful that they do that and that we are fully funded, based on the formula. And we are very grateful for that. But there will be no repayment of that nine hundred and thirty million dollars that we have not received over the last fourteen years. The second challenge is that, you know, Colorado law allows for school districts to go over their total program, as I mentioned, with mill levy overrides by a certain amount and maximize the override capacity of the district as a taxing authority. We have not maximized our override capacity. We still have room to go, and other districts have. So they're, they're receiving more revenue because they've done that. And the third piece is that the law, Colorado allows districts to tie their overrides to inflation, allowing those override dollars to increase over time and maintain buying power. Other districts have tied all of their mill levy overrides from the past to inflation, and so they continue to increase year over year with CPI. Jeffco has only tied one mill levy override to inflation. That was the last one we passed in twenty eighteen. All the rest remain the same as the year that they passed them. So if we pass twenty million dollar mill levy override in twenty thirteen, it's worth twenty million dollars today. And it's just putting a lot of compression on our revenue. So if the state, if the state gives a five-point-two percent CPI increase to what they're funding public ed, we're getting about half of that, maybe a little less, because of our mill levy overrides, which is a good chunk of our revenue, not increasing with that inflation. And it's really challenging and putting a ton of pressure on us. And you can see in the next slide what some of, what it leads to in terms of some of our challenges. This is the average teacher's salary from twenty-two, twenty-three, so a couple of years old, for the neighboring districts around us. And you can just see that we're at the bottom. And it's, it's a challenge, because we have incredibly dedicated employees. And we also want to be able to recruit, we want to take care of those who have been with us. We want to recruit, you know, top talent for our students. And then, the next slide shows you it's not just teachers. It is also teachers at the beginning, step one, midpoint of our salary schedule and maximum. Our independent support professionals who are special education paraprofessionals are also six out of seven front-range districts and seven percent below market at the midpoint. Again, you can see another group of paraprofessionals that are really below. And our elementary principals are six percent below the average midpoint as well. And we're fifth out of six in the front range. So these are just some comparison points. We've done a lot of study and analysis of where we sit within the market as we've negotiated with our associations for compensation and also just prioritized that, that this is important to us. The Board of Education has set this employee compensation as a priority and, and I have as well. Next slide please. And one of the things that we always like to end on is to just say that investment in Jeffco employees is an investment in the local community. So salary and benefits, as I mentioned before, account for about eighty-five percent of our overall expenses and our budget. And, and a staggering eighty-one percent of Jeffco employees live in Jefferson County. So when we invest in our employees, we invest in the families that live in Jeffco. We invest in our economic development. And I do think in the coming years, we're going to have to take a serious look at a local measure to support ongoing revenue for Jeffco Public Schools. And it's something our board is interested in, I'm interested in. And we're just kind of beginning the process of educating people so that they understand the why once we do decide to do something of that nature.
Thank you, Mayor.
First, thanks for the presentation. Fantastic, as always. For, for Moore, for Moore Middle, was that a sale situation? Or are you just re, repurposing it for the training center?
Correct.
And the municipal interest process, I saw where, was that the beginning of the process where it was, where you're putting that in? So if we had an interest in Wit, for example, what's the process for us to give, what's the mechanism for us to tell you?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll be in communication with Mark as we, regarding what our next round of properties are. And certainly if there are properties in your, that are of your interest, he'll have a heads up and he'll know. And we can start that conversation then. So that's, we've been communicating that to city managers ahead of bringing it to the board for surplus.
Okay, and then I guess from us to you, are we, how do we organize that? What's your recommendation on how to organize us to, if we have any suggestions to give to you to talk?
It would certainly be something worthwhile if the council had interest in a particular property to, you know, ask that we put that in a study session and come in and talk about that. These schools have all been announced for a year plus at this point, haven't they? I think pretty close, maybe more.
Closure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Not surplus necessarily.
Right, right, right. And so, you know, just if there's an interest in the council, certainly bring that forward and having a council study session. We had our hands full past year with Sheridan Green, so not asking for more.
You know, Zurger's available.
Yeah. Yep, but yeah, just study session like anything else.
Yeah, the reason why I ask is because we have a lot of residents who reach out to us and say, hey, what are you going to do with this building? Can we do this and can we do this? You know, we have a lot of input that comes to us. So I think that's good for us to at least know that we could possibly have a study session. And then there's an actual mechanism, so thanks for doing that.
Yep, and I, and I will say too, if, if the city makes a determination that there isn't an interest in one of the facilities and you are getting inquiries, please pass them on to me. We have information on our website. We have Roger Sherman here who's worked with our public engagement firm. So we are collecting interested parties and then we're communicating with them when we have updates to share. So just also know that that's an opportunity too. If somebody says, hey, what's going on? We have an interest and it might not align to the city's interest. You can send that to us and then we'll make sure we're communicating about our process outside of, you know, what the city might, might want to do if there is a formal interest that comes out from, from y'all.
And finally, just from my own curiosity, the concurrent enrollment program that you have, can you just give a little more on that? So I have a nine-year-old and we're, we're thinking far ahead as to what we're going to do. Because these tuition rates are out of control. So I know it's a huge tuition savings tool, right? How is it set up? What's your plans to?
Yeah, I'm so glad you asked this. So we have a project that's currently underway called High School Reimagined, which I anticipate will also impact the middle level and elementary at some point. There are really four pillars to the High School Reimagine project. The whole goal is to make sure that our high school experience, which by the way, looks a whole heck of a lot like it did when many of us were in high school. And the world has changed so much and so rapidly that we really do believe we need to change the high school experience to prepare students for either the world of college or workforce. So there are four pillars that we're focused on. One is the resume of a Jeffco graduate, which will outline the skills, durable skills as well as social skills that students will have as they cross that graduation stage to be able to take with them into whatever they decide to do next. The second pillar is the development of systemic pathways for career. So students will have the opportunity to explore various pathways as they make decisions about what they might want to do after graduation, either in the workforce or in their studies. One of those pathways, as an example, just to kind of paint that picture a little bit, is the, the, the school pot, law and policy and public safety pathway that we talked about at Moore Middle School. We are writing grants right now to shift more into basically a pathway school for students who want to begin exploring law enforcement, legal studies and/or public safety as something that they might be interested in in their career. Now, a student might go there, take a couple of classes and decide, that's not for me. We think that's just as valuable as a student who goes there, studies and completes. And then hopefully becomes, you know, a Westminster law enforcement officer or a campus supervisor for Jeffco or one of our R1 officers. So we're really excited. That's an example of a pathway. We'd like to create several really robust pathways for students to understand that they have access to and then explore. Third is the opportunity for us to compact credits for kids. So, and here's a very basic example, something we're already starting to do. Students who take marching band as an extracurricular or even a class during the day can next year, beginning next year, receive PE credit for band. Because they are working a lot and we will pair a PE teacher with a band director or teacher to make sure that the standards around PE are getting hit within what they study for band. We'd like to do that for many courses so that students can free up time in their schedule in their junior and senior year. For the fourth pillar, which is a seminal high school career experience. So this might be an internship. You know how we do outdoor lab for every sixth grader in Jeffco? That's the seminal sixth grade experience. We would like to have every junior or senior engaged in a seminal internship, career exploration experience. Aligned with standards and course credit, so it's not just on top of everything else that they have to do. We've had a lot of student voice, a lot of parent voice, a lot of educator voice in this sort of visioning. It's going to be a multi-year piece. But I think through that, we will also be able to build in things like certifications for students, co-curricular concurrent enrollment for them to receive credits. And hopefully the numbers that I was celebrating today, when I come back in three years and we talk to you again, hopefully they've doubled or tripled and we can continue to provide these really relevant and meaningful career experiences for kids.
I think that's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, so I have a question about a Moore Middle School. So the students that would usually be going to Moore are now going to be going to Pomona. Is that still the plan? Has there been any other school districts who have done a six through twelve model? And do we know what that looks like?
So we have looked around when we made this decision. The, the planning team led by the Pomona principal did look at some different models. And in fact, two of the models that he looked at and talked with school leaders are at our schools in Jeffco. So Dievelin is a six through twelve program. Chatted with that community and the leaders in that school. And then we also, in both the Jefferson and Alameda articulation areas, we have a seventh through twelfth grade model. And feel strongly that the sixth grade should go with the seventh graders, especially if we have space in the building to make sure that they have some of their own privacy and ability to be together and not with all of the older kids, which we do at Pomona. And so yes, we were able to talk even internally about what does this look like? And what are some considerations we need to make as we begin to move toward this model for Pomona?
I'm just curious why you chose a six through twelve model instead of a K through eight for the students at Moore Middle School?
For the students at Moore? Well, when we started the closure process, phase one was very difficult. There were sixteen schools that we closed all at once. We had very clear criteria for when, what is, what led to a school being on the list of closures. And we also at the same time said to our school leaders, this is what we're going to do right now. Because this is what we systemically can handle and manage the change and be present with people and take care of them. However, we know that we are going to have to engage in more closures. And, and we did. We've, we've closed our Vata K eight, we're closing Coal Creek and we closed more. And we said to our school leaders, if you, outside of this, these sixteen elementary schools, if you have an idea based on your knowledge of your community that you think would be beneficial and a vision for it, and you have interest from your community in moving that forward, please come tell us. And so Mr. Rock at Pomona came and said, I have an idea. I know Moore is struggling. His colleague at Moore at the time, who's no longer the principal there, but she also came with him and said, I think this is a good idea. We said, great, why don't you go talk to the community and see if they think it's a good idea? So they went out to the elementary principals, Moore Middle School and the Pomona School Accountability Committees, PTAs, started talking about their vision. And it really was more of a, more of a grassroots idea and solution that came to us versus some of the other closures, most of the other closures we've done, which was us saying, these are the ones that need to close. And so that's how it came about. And in their conversations, the idea of a K eight did not, did not come up. And, and I'll just be really honest with you, we have such small elementary schools that it would have, and the retrofit to do, to turn a middle school into an elementary school and a middle school would have been quite costly. So it just wasn't something that came from the community and it wasn't something that we felt was the, the right decision at the right time.
I, I was more thinking because we are losing our neighborhood schools, not turning Moore into a K through eight, but more filtering into some of our elementary schools that are struggling. So that way they are now at capacity, so maybe they wouldn't have to be closed in the future was my, my line of, you know, wondering why. But when you talk about outreach, were parents included in, in the outreach when you were?
For the Pomona, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I actually can maybe address some of your question about the other. Right now, we're engaged in a really intensive boundary study and choice study. Because I, I feel pretty strongly that I don't want to leave, I don't want the district to be in a spot that I was in when I came in where declining enrollment had lingered and lingered and lingered. And the can had been kicked down the road for so long that we were out, we were out of runway. And we didn't have a choice. We had to close schools. We had schools of a hundred and eighty kids or less. And, and I didn't have anything that I could hold on to that had been done to study the demographics to say, hey, here's some ideas or at least a guide for what we think is going to be hitting the district in the next decade or fifteen years or twenty years. And so with our boundary study that we're doing right now, as well as some work that Jeff's going to be leading on strategic capital planning, we will be, we will in the next year or two, I think, have a guide. Have a guide for the district that will say, these are the things in the part, this part of town needs to be paid attention to. And in the next few years, you might need to, once again, consolidate elementary schools. And you might want to put a new school building in a bond so that you could combine these three schools and all the kids in those three schools could get a brand new school. Those kinds of ideas we think will be suggestions in this strategic plan moving forward so that the district isn't left flat footed as we were in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, and then one more question. So you were talking about pathway schools and one of the things you're doing with Moore is turning that into, you know, one of your pathway schools for law enforcement. And so I was just wondering what criteria is used to decide what type of pathway school? Because you talked about wanting to create a couple more. So I was just wondering what criteria you use when deciding what pathway that's going to be?
Yeah, we are currently working with our chambers and industry partners to understand a couple of things. What are the needs for jobs in our community in the next ten to twenty years? That's important. As well as what are pathways that students could go into that are going to have good earning potential. And so those are two criteria that we're already looking at. But I would say that our framework for what gets approved as a, as a pathway, why it gets approved, what's the process for that is still in development.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you very much for the presentation.
Counsel Camelia?
Yes, thank you. So a quick question. What if any are the benefits that we've seen or we may see coming from a more compact district? Have we been able to expand any programs? Or I realize that most of this is accepting the risk that's already come our way. But have we been able to improve any certain areas? Expand, no.
We've seen efficiencies in some of our services like transportation and food nutrition services. We have some efficiencies in staffing. So we have fewer, we still have like art, music and PE teachers who are shared across buildings, but we have much fewer of those. And, you know, it's always beneficial when the art, music and PE teacher can be full-time in a building because they, they contribute so much to the culture of the school. But that's been a benefit. We have saved money. We've probably saved about twelve million, maybe a little bit more. And those costs, people always ask, well, it's, you know, where's the pot money? Where's the savings from closing schools? It really is helping us maintain staffing because we have a declining enrollment every year. And so our revenue keeps going down. So the more we can save, the more we can hold on to staff that are critical for our schools. We have fewer vacancies with, for example, mental health professionals because we have about, next year we'll have twenty fewer schools to serve and the students are more concentrated. We have fewer students who are sitting in a classroom of seven, eight or nine other students. And that's how many first graders are in the building. So they're, they're more, they're getting a more robust social experience with two first grades or three first grades in a building. Our teachers have more collegiality and opportunity to collaborate with one another. We had many, many elementary teachers who were, they were the only first grade teacher or they were the first, second grade teacher and no other colleagues to even talk to about, you know, how am I going to teach this math lesson today? What are you going to do? Right? Sometimes that's the best professional learning any of us can get is to just talk to a colleague. And many of our teachers didn't have that. So those are some, those are some benefits off the top of my head. You know, I don't know that we've seen, we have, we have fewer schools that don't have after-school programming. So that's a programming example of, many of our small schools couldn't afford to have a program because they didn't have enough kids who would participate for it to be viable. So that's a programming example, along with the art, music and PE.
Great, thank you. And then just for our awareness, what is the process to maximize the override capacity you talked about and tying that to inflation? How do we make that happen?
Yeah, that's a good, great question. Anybody who wants to join me, you are welcome. Join us on that journey and our Board of Education, I know, would be thrilled to have the support of our city council members across all eight municipalities. I think part of it is being able to talk about it publicly and to help people understand that when your property taxes go up, it doesn't mean the school district gets more money and here's how it really works. Making sure that our communities understand that. I think it's a really difficult time right now, given the property tax increases and some of the, the ballot measures on a possible property tax cap in November. But we are currently exploring what the timeline would look like. We have been convening what we call the Jeffco Alliance, which is a group of about a hundred different people who are influential and care deeply about Jeffco and very interested in giving us their feedback. And they have created um interested in giving us their feedback. And they have created a um, I would say a draft of what they'd like to see Jeffco invest in if a milla- a future Mill Levy override is passed. Those three categories are um employee compensation um and benefits, like just, you know, maintaining and retaining um and recruiting high-quality staff. So that's one. Number two is um. Yes, uh, safe and effective learning environment. So that has to do with like mental health supports as well as just safety and security in our buildings, which is obviously a priority in Jeffco and for all districts. And then the third, um, Lisa, can you say it? Yes, high school reimagined, what I just talked about. That we would invest in these pathways for students, opportunities for career-connected learning um and that kind of thing. So, so we would be thrilled to um, you know, begin to put together some sort of ideas for investment in those three categories and the alliance is helping us do that. The question really is about timing and, you know, which November would be, would be the best uh target for us to consider a ballot measure. And that's, of course, up to our Board of Education.
Thank you.
Councilor Ireland?
Mine were already asked, so.
Good questions. Um, at what point will the city manager know what's being proposed at surgery?
Yeah, we in, you know, we'll bring it to our board. Uh, and then, you know, as soon as as they've had a a chance to review and possibly uh accept a recommendation, I'll be in touch with Mark and we'll have a conversation over that, for sure.
Thank you for taking the time to come.
Thank you.
With us.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
I was gonna say, I was just gonna say, is it colder than usual?
When you say it, then I know it's frozen.
Welcome.
Hello.
Good to see you all.
Haven't seen you for a while.
It has been a while. Nice to see you, Mayor. Nice to see you, City Leadership.
Hi, hi neighbors.
We saw you at the chamber. It was a great night.
Thanks for having us. Um, this is a lot different than when I come talk to you guys for five minutes really fast and hand out our uh our Elevate report, but um we have a nice little presentation. So start off with a video, I believe.
And for those who may not know Lori, this is Lori Goldstein, the President of our Board of Education. I'm Chris Gudowski, the Superintendent, and we're joined by our colleague Amira Asad-Lucas, who's another member of the Board of Education.
At Adams Twelve Five-Star Schools, we're Five-Star proud to elevate student success.
Tell me something great about you.
I'm respectful.
Every student, every classroom, every day. Just north of Denver,
Ready, roll.
Five-Star Schools has all the benefits of a large district, but with a close-knit feel.
I am respectful. I am myself, others and property.
I am responsible. I am trying.
I can't say it enough. Adams Twelve is an amazing place to be.
My little one's always so excited to go to school. She's like, I cannot wait to see my teacher. I cannot wait to learn.
I used to be quiet. I used to be observant. I used to sit in the back of the class. But then when I realized that I could start asking questions and that people would actually listen, it's amazing.
Hi, my answer, the difference is five.
They are caring and compassionate and they are inclusive.
No matter where you come from, no matter who you are, no matter what your story is, Adams Twelve believes and not only believes, but gives each and every one of us the support and the resources that we need. Students, teachers, parents, the community.
The Five-Star District offers multiple pathways, giving students the knowledge and skills necessary to pursue the future of their choosing.
I just set my own expectations and my own ambitions and I was allowed to do so.
They excel. They excel as a whole group together. To be risk takers, to be out-of-the-box thinkers, believe in themselves.
I'm Five-Star proud.
My family is Five-Star proud.
Together, we are Five-Star proud.
Thinking we start cutting carbs. I need to drop my belly.
Interesting thing about Emmy, she's a Daniel's Fund recipient from, she graduated from Thorpe High and uh she's attending Yale?
I think she's at Northeastern University in Boston region. She's excelled from a family that was new to the country. She came without speaking English. None of her uh family members had graduated high school, let alone gone gone to college, and it's a great story.
Yeah, she has a TED Talk if you're interested. Um, our district is, I think, the sixth largest in the metro area. We have about thirty-five thousand students, very diverse. Um, you know, we have a very high concentration of Hispanic and white. Um, and we have other ethnicities. Um, and ninety-eight languages are spoken in our district. We are the biggest employer in Adams County, uh, four thousand four hundred and thirty-one employees. Um, we have, our our administrators are around three hundred and our certified twenty-three hundred and our classified are about seven, almost eighteen hundred. We have fifty-six schools, um, twenty-nine elementaries, seven middle, five comprehensive high schools, four charter schools, three alternative high schools, three K eights. Uh, we have two campuses for career and technical. And we also um have one P eight, one K five magnet, which is an arts magnet, one online academy, which was kind of born out of, um, actually out of COVID, where we were all online. There were, it was identified that there was a need to continue to have an online education opportunity for our students. So that's, and it's um, I think it's the second year and it now, it does have a physical space for part-time, but um it's growing. So our Elevate Plan was something that was born in about twenty eighteen with a community uh engagement effort with over two hundred people at the ad building talking about what it is we wanted to see for Adams Twelve down the road. Um, we had just passed a twenty sixteen bond and we were building um a new K eight. We built our STEM, we rebuilt our STEM school. We put additions on two Westminster elementaries that you might be familiar with, the Rappahoe Ridge and Cotton Creek. And so now that we had all this, we needed to decide what did we wanna do from the academic standpoint? And so we came up with our Elevate Plan.
So I'll just add a little fun story to what Lori just shared about development of this Elevate Plan. My most favorite part of this job is going to elementary school classrooms, especially kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and just popping in unannounced and seeing what's going on authentically and hearing the questions that students pose. And the three most common ones, two of them are relevant to how we did the Elevate Plan and one is just funny. The first question, the most popular question is to the teacher, is that your husband or is that your boyfriend? And usually the teacher turns red, starts to get flushed. I know inside their head, they're like, thank God, no, uh, that's not my husband or boyfriend. And then I'll often say, no, that's Superintendent Gudowski. He's the big boss of the school district. The second thing that often happens, especially if I'm wearing a tie, is are you the president? Are you the President of the United States for like kindergartners? And then for uh kids who are a little bit more sophisticated, are you the president of the school district? And then the third one that seems more common lately, so do you own the school district? A lot of times you show up dressed up, you have a tie on, uh, the teacher introduces you with some respect and authority and kids feel like, wow, you must own this place. And what I often tell them is, no, your parents are the owners and your neighbors are the owners. And people who uh go to school with you that you see dropping you off, they're the owners of the school district. And they're the ones who tell us what we need to do to serve you. And I'm proud of Elevate. I think oftentimes either Boards of Education say, here's our vision for what goes on. Sometimes Board members run on a platform about this is what the schools need to be. Superintendents often do the same. This is my, my vision for the district and my entry plan and here's what I'm going to do. And I just think listening strongly, closely to your community and adjusting over time so that you're making sure that what you do is what the community wants is imperative. And I feel like we've done a really good job of that. I'll just highlight a few things on this slide uh that are important. We certainly wanna raise achievement for students and close gaps for groups of students and get to a place that we're competing with other districts like us. What we often do is measure ourselves in terms of student achievement, growth, graduation outcomes and the state's report card, looking for districts that are similar to us. And usually we're looking at districts that have free and reduced lunch populations that are plus or minus five percent within us, that have multilingual learner populations similar to us and that have comparable numbers of special education students as well. That exercise has become more challenging over time to find districts that look like us. At this juncture, fifty-two percent of our kids in Adams Twelve qualify for free and reduced lunch. When I started this job in November of two thousand nine, it was in the low thirty percent. So we see greater income challenge, economic challenge for a larger portion of our district that has developed over the last fifteen years. So that's more challenging. I believe we're third most in the state in terms of the quantity of multilingual learners that we serve. We have a smaller percentage than some districts like Westminster Public Schools, but we have typically a much higher percentage than most other districts of about our size. Seventeen percent of the students that we serve, the primary language spoken in their home is other than English. So that's, you look at thirty-five thousand kids and you multiply by seventeen percent and it's usually in the six thousand or so student range. So that creates additional challenge for us. And what we want to do badly is to have our students achieve at a level that, notwithstanding some of the economic disadvantages they may face and the language barriers they're working uh to overcome, that they emerge with a rigorous and relevant diploma and that we have them prepared for the next step of life. A story that I often tell to principals and administrator meetings in our district was when I was a twenty-five or twenty-six-year-old, uh, recent graduate of law school, living in Arvada, talking to a graduate of Pomona High School, and we're getting to know one another and we're talking about where we came from. And I said, I'm a Thornton High School graduate. And his response back was, did you pack a knife to school? And I kinda giggled cuz I didn't know what else to say or do in the moment. But I think that exchange really typifies how a lot of people think about school systems and their graduates. They make judgments about the housing, their perceptions of crime, income levels of families. And if you go to a place that's perceived to be lower income, I think they often believe you have lesser skills, lesser capabilities. And so my passion is really working for kids who come from those same circumstances that I did and frankly, many more now who are students of color uh than when I was a student in Adams Twelve and have them not be in a spot where the first assumption is, because you lived in the zip code and you went to this high school, you're lesser than a student who's gone somewhere else. And the best way I know to make that happen is to elevate these student outcomes for students. And we've worked really hard at it. We have some good results to share in that space.
One thing I also noticed, listening to Chris, that he has a lot of history in Adams Twelve. And um so do I. So I've worked in Adams Twelve. So I have about four years' experience working and living in Adams Twelve. And a lot of our employees also have a very um extensive background in Adams Twelve. Um, our chief academic officer was my eighth-grade student. Um, so was the um secondary, the director of secondary education. But so many of our kids grew up in Adams Twelve and came back and work in Adams Twelve, my daughter. And so um there's a lot of Five-Star pride. That's kind of one of our hashtags too, Five-Star proud.
I'll just toss a few more numbers at you in terms of that top section. When I started in two thousand nine, our district graduation rate for four years was sixty-one point seven percent. For our Hispanic students, it was fifty point five percent, so less than fifty-one percent. And as I started in the very first uh weeks of the job, brought that information forward publicly to our administrative team and principals, I think many people weren't aware that's how all those statistics came together and that we were failing so many kids. And it became imperative for us to do much better. We're now at a place, and you'll see it later on in the slide deck, that we have a grad rate that's higher than the state average. There have been some years in the past where that gap between white students and Hispanic students has been as low as three and a half percent, which we're very proud of. There are a number of years, um, over the last three to four years where the Latino rate, that was fifty point five percent in two thousand nine, is in excess of eighty percent. So we've really leaned in um to raising outcomes at the same time that we have the highest SAT composite score that we've ever had in the district last year and a lot of other measurements that show that. In terms of outperforming peer districts, the other thing that I should say in this space, and I'm glad that Tracy has left, is although she knows how this goes, uh, she heard the sermon lots of times, that I would challenge our system to beat Jeffco on the state's performance framework report card. And that's for the same reasons I talked about before. If we want people to start thinking about our kids who are graduates of our system as not kids who had to carry knives to school, but kids who've had a rigorous and relevant education that has them well-prepared for the workforce, for college, for the military, we've got to start elevating outcomes from where they were. And then before the pandemic in two thousand nineteen, we were down to a spot that we were performance-rated district. Uh, for a good chunk of my early years, the first three or so, we were an improvement district in the state system. We're now a performance, which is the level that I think throughout the metro region we aspire to be in, and we're proud to sustain that. We had reduced down the number of schools that were priority improvement or turnaround, what we often call the accountability clock. We had just one out of fifty-six schools in that status. And that was the best in the entire state for large districts at that time. And we really felt like we were on the cusp of having zero. The one school, by the way, that was in that status was Rocky Mountain Elementary in Westminster. We've been working very hard there. I think this year we may be over the hump and have them, they're off the clock. They moved to improvement last year, but I could see them being a performance-rated school, which would feel tremendous. But in two thousand nineteen, because of all those pieces, we're improving school outcomes, we're improving district outcomes, we're improving grad rates. We did eclipse Jeffco by a couple tenths of one percent on that state report card. So we had some big celebrations about that, felt really good about it. And then sadly, uh, we regressed quite a bit after the pandemic. I think the pandemic was really hard for some of our families and parts of our district, especially our higher-poverty schools. They regressed. And so we found ourselves in the most recent time when we had state assessments and ratings with eleven schools two years ago that were priority improvement or turnaround, that felt awful. That was back to where we were maybe five or six years before the pandemic. Last year, we reduced that down to six. I'm hopeful we'll be down to maybe one or two for next year. So just know that uh there's a lot of buzz about what does public ed care about and pay attention to. We care about a lot of things. But certainly in improving students' achievement and growth and graduation outcomes is a really important part of the whole mix for us. I could keep talking about that slide, but that's probably enough on that one. Next slide.
Oh, yeah, he's already talked a little bit about some of it, but we do have our highest district graduation rate ever, a little bit above the state. Um, we also have been able to uh increase the amount of students who get um industry certifications through our CTE programming. Um, you can get um auto mechanics or you can get your CNA or you can get um your, we've sent people to uh your fire department. So um there's a lot of industry certifications that are available now that we have, and we have two nice hefty campuses for CTE. Um, our, the number of our kids getting a three or higher on the C, on the AP testing has gone up a lot too in the last several years. And we too have concurrent enrollment. Um, my daughter earned fourteen credits of college credit, which was a whole semester of college, which really saved us a lot of money. Um, so we in- increased that too. All all our comprehensive high schools have opportunities for kids to do that and our CTE spaces too. So that's something that we've really strived for. Another big thing that we're doing right now too, and I don't know if that was in the slides or not, but PTech. So um keeping re- and retaining high-quality educators has become a big concern in a lot of school districts. So one of the things that we're doing is we're tagging on with a a grant that St. Brine is doing where we grow our own. And kids can get um up to two years of their first four years of college paid for by going through this program, uh, getting credits during high school and then going on to community college so that hopefully we can give them to come back and work for us.
I guess the final two things I would say on there, on the AP piece, the pride I have about that forty-three to sixty-seven percent, tremendous growth. When we had our results in two thousand nineteen, the stat that always sticks on my head is AP Biology. Only sixteen percent of our kids who are taking that exam were getting a three, four or five roughly fifteen years ago. And last year, it was in excess of sixty percent of the students getting a three, four or five. So I I think there's lots of perceptions about which AP exams are most rigorous and most difficult and which ones are pretty easy to get a three, four or five on. And there are some in language arts and English where the pass rates are ninety percent plus, or at least have been for our students lately. But there's a lot of students in really technical and complicated content areas who are excelling that weren't before. And it's not just the more affluent kids in our district. We've really increased dramatically the number of kids who are taking AP exams. We've really increased dramatically the number of kids who are taking AP exams and the diversity of kids along the economic continuum who are taking them and passing and getting a head start in college. I don't think I would note is the exclamation point at the bottom. There's a test called ACCESS that's given to students each year who are in the process of acquiring English language skills, and it measures how well they're doing. And so, in ACCESS, both at elementary, middle, and high school, each of the last five years, we've been at the fiftieth percentile plus. So, we've been meeting or exceeding the state average. That level of consistency is hard to pull off, and I'm just really proud of our staff. I firmly believe that for our multilingual learners, they will come out with a skill set that many of us envy and wish we had if they can be fluent and proficient, both in their native language and in English. And our staff is really doing a great job of moving kids forward in that space. Next slide.
Okay, just highlight a few of the schools that are in Westminster. Rappahoe Ridge Elementary, Governor's Distinguished Improvement Award. And they exceed the rating for student growth in both English language and math. Rocky Mountain Elementary, that's the one down the street from me. It's had the highest average student growth in both English and math since two thousand nineteen, and it exited the state performance watch, took a lot of hard work, and they really, every, every staff member there put their all into doing that. And Off-Broadway Shoes provides five thousand dollars to purchase new shoes for kids. And they all, all the students participate, or the girls, and the girls on the run, and they will all get new running shoes for the Five Star Five K, which is this Saturday, which, sorry, interferes with your great cleanup, but they'll be there running out at the fairgrounds. Cotton Creek Elementary, where my son went, they exceeds, that exceeds rating in math. Student Council raised money for a buddy bench, so that if a child is in need of somebody to talk to during recess, they sit on the bench and, and somebody will, or somebody will sit on the bench, and if somebody wants somebody to talk to, they can come over and talk to them, too. And you know that we put additions on at Rappahoe Ridge and Cotton Creek with the two thousand sixteen bond, and thank you for your partnership in that.
Next slide. Let me keep going, you're on a good roll.
Sure, okay, Five Star Online Academy. The physical building is in Westminster, and their first year's graduation rate was eighty-one percent. And the kids that attend the Five Star Online Academy, for whatever reason, might be struggling in a brick-and-mortar school, and this has made it more of a successful opportunity for them. And then Silver Hills Middle School, which was built back in, I think, about two thousand six, they exceeded the state average for their multilingual learners on the ACCESS assessment, which is the assessment that English learners take. This year, they had a new seventh and eighth grade Latinos in action. We've got those in several of our schools. And they collaborated with the Rappahoe Ridge Elementary, which is a feeder school to Silver Hills, and they have a mentoring program with the school. And Mountain Range High School is the high school that's in Westminster in our district, and it, and it exceeds rating for multilingual learners in the ACCESS, and it also exceeds the rate for a four-year graduation. The two thousand twenty-four Daniel Scholars is there. I did not know that. There's, that's a new one. And the Daniel Scholars are selected for demonstrating exceptional character, and they can attend any university they want in the country.
So, on this slide, the thing that came to mind for me is that there's often been interest, both in the city of Northland, that Northland High School just serves kids from Northland. We'd love to have the boundaries be that way. And there's been some advocacy by past city councils here. We'd love Mountain Range High School, since it's in Westminster, to serve only kids from Westminster. That hasn't been feasible in the past. It's not feasible now, just given how compact our district is and how all these boundaries, I mean, municipalities and school districts aren't neatly aligned. But there are opportunities for us moving forward to do some boundary adjustments now that we're not in the boom mode that we were for most of our history. For most of our history, Peromac and other builders were just building homes left, right, and center. I lived in one of those Peromac homes for a long time, and I shared with our administrative team as we started the school year just that rapid pace of growth way back in the sixties, seventies, into the early eighties, where you build an elementary school, and three years later, it was built for five hundred, and it would have eleven hundred and fifty kids, and you're doing split sessions, and you're changing boundaries again next year, and you're buying homes that later are single-family residents, and you're having cottage environments for kindergarteners and first graders. That was us in the seventies and eighties, and we continued a lot of growth, but it expanded further north up until about six or seven years ago. And now, we're in the spot that we're seeing some declining enrollment. And one of the upsides to that is it gives us a chance to redo some boundaries that don't make a lot of sense in terms of keeping kids close to where they live and where they go to school. Silver Hills is a good example. A lot of the kids who go to Silver Hills, a lot of the students who go to Rocky Mountain Elementary actually live in Federal Heights in Thornton, and they get on a bus, and they travel a far distance from their home. And that's not a great way to build connection and community with the kids who live more proximate to the school. It's the same challenge at Silver Hills and the Mountain Range, just, it's skinny and wide. It goes from boundary to boundary, and there's so many different middle schools feeding in. The kids are having a hard time as they enter into high school, making the connections and having to start all over with, who's going to be my friend, how do I fit in here? So, in the years ahead, you'll be seeing us make some adjustments to boundaries that in the past, it was about necessity. You can't have eight hundred and fifty kids at Federal Heights Elementary like we did in two thousand ten. It's just untenable. And so, you have to make some adjustments to find room other places so that it's not overly crowded. But now, we need, as our next focus, to find ways to get kids closer to home where they're going to school and not on long bus rides like they have been for a long time.
Right. And my son, our homeschool is Silver Hills, but he goes to STEM launch, and he can actually scooter to school because we're so close. That's just down the street. And my daughters did graduate from Northland High School, and my neighborhood does attend. That's their homeschool, and they've done, they did exceptionally well there.
Next slide.
All right. So, we have a long-range planning committee, and that was started back in like twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, when we started talking about the two thousand sixteen bond. And I was a member of that right at the very beginning, and it's been great to see the evolvement of it over time. And now, what we're doing is we're starting to look into the future, and not just five years, maybe ten, and what is going to happen in Adams Twelve in terms of population growth. And so, we have kind of broken it off into like three different little groups, and we want to make sure that Adams Twelve is, keeps being the flagship that it is. So, we have to talk about our facilities. Our buildings, a lot of them are aging. Some of them are fifty, sixty years old, and some of them are not in the best shape. And some of them aren't really filled either. So, we have to think about how we want to best utilize our space before we have to close fifteen of them like Jeffco had to. We also want to make sure that our programming is kept current, up-to-date, and state-of-the-art, so that our kids, as they graduate, have the best opportunities to be successful in this world. So, we've been spending a couple of years now talking about what this looks like moving forward, and I think we're getting close to a place where we can roll this out.
Yeah, I expect our board will be hearing a lot more about Blueprint and blessing it in the May-through-August timeframe, so we're really close at this point. Next slide.
All right. So, we have to think about how to modernize education, because the learners of today are a lot different than the learners of fifteen, twenty years ago. And the needs in our society are a lot different, too. If you think about how many different times, or how many different jobs don't exist yet even, and they talk about that all the time. So, we want to make sure that we have great programming that meets all those needs in a space that's going to be best efficient to deliver those.
Part of what I would say on facilities, that's different for us in terms of a next bond that compared to ones in the past. For our history, there was always a school, sometimes multiple schools, new schools that were part of bond proposals, because you're just growing, growing, growing. The Great Recession, I think, has really done a big change in terms of family size and economics for a lot of families in our region. And so, we've seen birth rates and the number of school-aged children decline significantly. So, as we look ahead, we may have just one more school to build in Adams Twelve to take us through the next hundred years potentially. And that would be up in Broomfield in the baseline development, where there's a lot of high-density housing coming onboard, but that may be it. And when I was starting the job fifteen years ago, our demographers were saying, "We probably need five more schools." We built one in two thousand sixteen under Vista up in Broomfield. We may have another, but lots of the other growth areas that we thought were going to happen and boom, between shrinking populations of school-aged children in other places and the just fewer people moving into new housing units, it's not going to take us nearly as many new schools to serve our community long-term as we once thought. What you will start to see us grapple with is similar to what our colleagues from Westminster have grappled with in the past. We may, in this next bond, talk about tearing down Thornton High School, which isn't all that old. It was built in the mid-seventies, early seventies. But it has a lot of structural and facilities deficits in terms of its walls, its roof. It's five levels, so it's kind of a funky design. It's built into a hill. It's very dark. Has water issues. The toilets don't flush. I can go on and on. And so, we may be in the spot for the first time of tearing down something and rebuilding it at scale of, of big magnitude. We've torn down a school or two in the past and rebuilt, but nothing like a high school, and that's a costly proposition, in excess of two hundred million dollars is the estimate to tear down this high school and rebuild it. But I think it's becoming that time that we're going to have to start doing some of that renewal of the older schools in our, in our district. Next slide.
All right. So, money. We've had four mill, I think, four mill levy overrides, and only one of them adjusts to inflation, and that's the one that we passed in two thousand eighteen. So, when we passed these mills back in the early two thousands, that money doesn't buy you as much as it used to. And so, we just haven't kept up with the inflation in that aspect for our mill levies. We may ask for one this fall, too. But it's the way we kind of make up for what we don't get from the state. That's the next slide, I think.
If we go on to the next slide, I may talk more about this one. So, first off, there's a common thread between part of what Jeffco presented to you earlier and us around the mill levy override piece. This is a graph that presents some data that has more data points than the Jeffco slide. I'll also say that our numbers on here are different than the ones on the Jeffco slides. I've checked with our CFO, and we think it's that our data is more up-to-date, and Jeffco's may be about a year old in terms of enrollment numbers and in terms of money generated per kid based on current assessed valuation. So, I think these are the current numbers. The ratios really are the most important thing. They really haven't changed, whether it's Jeffco's or ours. What you see on that graph is Jeffco's twelfth out of fifteen school districts in terms of mill levy override money, we're thirteenth, and then there's twenty-seven J and Adams Fourteen to the east of us, who are fourteenth and fifteenth in the, in the metro area. And the point I've been making recently is when you start multiplying those differences by thirty-five thousand kids, the sums are enormous. So, the funding difference for us, if we had the forty-five hundred twenty-two dollars of mill levy override money as Inglewood, it's about ninety-five million dollars more per year to serve our kids. If we have the same amount of money as Boulder, I know that one, that number is more than ninety-one million dollars more a year that we would have to serve our kids. And there's a lot of impacts that come from those discrepancies. In our district, we know that we have about four and a half percent of our educators who earn a hundred thousand dollars or more a year. In Boulder Valley, the superintendent recently shared that forty percent of their teachers earn more than a hundred thousand dollars a year. And in this time of scarcity, where the number of special ed teachers is not sufficient, everyone has vacancies. We have over thirty vacancies in special education, teaching and paraprofessional jobs right now. There's also lots of vacancies in Title I environments that we see. The number of applicants are fewer, the duration they stay in a school is less, and we have more unfilled vacancies, especially in things like teaching math and science and more technical areas in middle school and high school. When your wages are so much lower than others because you're ninety-one million dollars less than a Boulder, or you're seventy-five million dollars less a year than a Denver, it just puts you at a competitive disadvantage. There's some people who say, "I live here. I want to work here." There are some people who say, "I believe in the mission, and I like the way they do business in Adams Twelve." But there's other people saying, "I've got groceries to put on the table, and wherever I can get the most money between this district, this one, and this one, I'm taking it because I've got student loans to pay, a mortgage to pay." And we find ourselves in that very similar position that Jeffco's in in terms of struggling to compete right now. And I'll just say, there's a proposal right now by Representative McCluskey, Senator Zinger. I think Senator Lundin has signed on to readjust the school funding formula moving forward to be more student-centered and equitable. And I am fighting tooth and nail, and going to continue to do so, to say, the biggest equity in our state and in our region by a lot is not the weights for how much you get for a special needs student, a multilingual learner, or an at-risk child. It's these huge discrepancies in the mill levy overrides that have developed during my tenure. That gives some people, we have huge haves, and if you're Adams Fourteen, you're a huge have-not, and we've got to change it. Next slide.
So, as I said before, we're thinking about entertaining a bond and a mill for this next year. The bond would be eight hundred and thirty million dollars without, without, with no tax rate increase. So, and then also, you know, we have the same problem, though, that people say, "Well, you're getting more in property taxes, so you should be getting more money." And as Tracy explained, no, it doesn't work that way. It's just less for the state to backfill. And then also, we, we think we could go for a thirty-four million dollar mill levy override, and that would be an eight point one-two-nine mill increase. And that would, if your home's worth about five hundred thousand, that would cost you an extra two hundred and forty-two dollars a year. And we've done some preliminary polling, and it's coming back pretty good for us. You have the numbers better to spew out than I.
We're going to publicly present this to the Board of Ed tomorrow night, but around the bond issue, seventy-one percent said they would be definitely or probably yes. I think the no tax rate increase language is a big selling point with folks. On the mill levy override, fifty-five percent of the people surveyed said they were a definite or probable yes on that one. So, they're encouraging numbers, but we know, we want to check in with people again closer to election time, probably late summer, start of fall, to see what things may have changed. And if we go forward, we're going to have to hustle hard to get the word out. Lots of things on a presidential year ballot, and it's hard to sometimes have people listen to your issue. But we're going to work hard to try to earn people's trust, to have them say yes, and then invest these dollars really wisely to serve kids in our community. I think that's it.
It is. Questions? You have a question?
So, I have three five-star students. And I actually just got to attend the Mountain Range. They did a little friends and family percussion and color guard performance last Friday night. It was, it was just so nice to see like how hard the kids have worked. And I don't know how the percussion team did. They went to state on Saturday, so.
I haven't heard either. We'll have to ask.
Okay. Anyway, just a question about when you were referring to enrollment. What is, I mean, is, have we stabled out, stabilized out in the district? Are you seeing, so with the reshuffling of kind of your just, your boundaries for schools, kind of seeing some stability with the schools not being under-attended or?
Well, it's not bleeding, but it's diminishing. First of all, people aren't having babies as much as they were before. And also, it's getting harder and harder to afford a house in our district. People are trying to find areas where they can. We haven't changed any of the elementary, or we haven't changed any of the boundaries internally yet. And we obviously can't change the perimeter. But we're thinking of ways of how to be creative as our buildings get a little emptier, of how we could utilize that space. Some of the thoughts that have come out there are things like making more K eights. There's a few schools that need to be rebuilt, maybe combining. That Thornton area with Thornton Middle, Thornton Elementary, and Thornton High, you know, making it a true campus, it's been tossed around. So, there's been lots of great ideas, but we haven't had to say we have to close any schools yet.
I'll jump in on that one, too. So, we've been declining about five hundred students a year over the last five or six years. So, that's meaningful reductions, and that's a little bit most everywhere, just as some neighborhoods age, and you have people where students leave the home, and the homeowner stays put for a long time. So, that dynamic has been fairly consistent for a while. We had a bigger loss in enrollment the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year when the pandemic was going on, and that was true of districts throughout the region. I think there were a lot of parents who chose to homeschool kids at that time, or they sometimes sought out a private school that might have greater flexibility in terms of following public health orders, in terms of masking and in-person attendance versus not. And then there were some people who are red-shirting their kindergartners and saying, "I don't want my kid to start kindergarten with a mask on and doing some in-person and some remote learning." But since that big high watermark of a lot of enrollment loss that year, it's been more this five hundred or so a year. The thing that's really changed now and complicates a lot of the analysis is all the immigration that we've had. Just from October first through early February, we gained over five hundred students toward. Just from October first through early February, we gained over five hundred students to our district. I know since that time, the rate has slowed down. I don't have a current number now. But it has made a pretty significant dent in terms of the number of declining enrollment students that we're projecting for next year. And the way school funding works, there's an averaging formula and so that influx has actually reduced down the amount of money that we'd otherwise be foregoing because of that infusion. It also changes the school closure consolidation discussions. We have some folks who say on the west side of our district, we have North Star Elementary with about two hundred and seventy-five, two hundred and eighty-five kids. Northmore Elementary, same, and Rocky Mountain, the same. And people, as they hear about Jeffco closures, consolidations and Denver and other places, start saying, are those the schools that you're gonna let to close and consolidate? And my view has been, we need to see what happens with immigration because those are often the schools that lots of newcomers are enrolling in. And there was a time um, as I started in this role, Federal Heights Elementary went from a place of like five hundred students to eight hundred and fifty within a couple of years' time. That was prompted by a lot of economic distress and lots of families doubling up and tripling up and some of the mobile homes in that environment. And I think there's times that economic strife and immigration can make big differences in terms of our enrollment. So we wanna be thoughtful and see how that plays out over time. And if we do have needs to do closure consolidation over time, there are so many things on the wish list that historically, because we're growing so fast, it was always like, we don't have space, we don't have space. And now there's interest to have more specialized programming for special needs kids. We'd like to have a bigger alternative program for middle school age kids. A Boys and Girls Club in parts of our community could be a really nice addition. So there's a lot of things that we can use that I think would still serve kids and neighborhoods really well. But we're a number of years away from getting there.
That did remind me, um I I know Broomfield was piloting, um I think it was for middle school students, free rides to the rec centers in Broomfield for about a uh I think they were doing that last year. I was just curious when you mentioned, you know, need for Boys and Girls Clubs and like um we're doing our Parks Master Plan right now. How does that play out with um maybe what we should be looking at for?
The conversation.
I met with the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club a few years back. It was pre-pandemic, so it's been a while since we refreshed it. At that time, I know they had a lot of interest in the southern part of our district, both the southeast corner where we have McQuain Elementary, Coronado Hills, Thornton Elementary. Feeling like there's a lot of students who probably can't get access to after-school activities that are tuition or fee-based and so they had interest in looking at that region. And I believe the same would be true in that Rocky Mountain, North Star, Northmore region where we have lots of cities. We have Northland, Portland and Westminster and Federal Heights all kinda coming close together and having schools in that region. But if we had an opportunity to expand those kinds of opportunities for students there, I think those would be the key priority areas in our district.
That could be interesting because if we we have our main rec center off one hundred and fourth and share it in, but I don't know. Yeah.
It's across the street from us. The border's right there.
That's right. It's close. Okay, those are my, those are my questions.
Counselor Ivan?
I don't have any, thank you.
Yes, I saw the numbers for uh English-speaking and Spanish-speaking students were pretty equal to each other, slightly more on the Spanish-speaking side. Do you have bilingual educators in the schools?
Well, the first thing I would just clarify that in terms of Hispanic and and white students, we do have slightly more Hispanic students than white. It's pretty comparable. It's like forty-seven, forty-six percent for both, but not all of our Hispanic students are Spanish-speaking. I just wanted to clarify that. It's probably a pretty small percentage of that, roughly sixteen thousand or so students who are Spanish speakers. But certainly that's the heritage and and race that they identify with. We do have some bilingual educators. That is a place that when you talk about a blueprint plan, we have interest in expanding into. Many years ago, Adams twelve had some bilingual schools, dual-language schools where you'd spend part of your day learning in English and part of the day in Spanish. And in the end, they weren't able to sustain because we couldn't find enough highly qualified Spanish-speaking educators to make that work. I think that dynamic has changed and improved since that time. Lots of student interest in that, family interest. Right now, for families in our district who have that interest, they go to Global Village Academy, which is a charter school authorized by the state. And there's dual-language opportunities in Spanish, Mandarin and Russian at that school. But we feel like there's still a lot of unmet need in our community, especially for an English-Spanish-focused school. And that's one of the things we'd hope to bring to fruition through this blueprint plan.
That's good to hear.
And our PTEACH program too, and one of its goals is to increase the number of um Hispanic educators.
Right. That's good. That's great that there's a concentration there. And I meant to thank you first for great data. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for all the extra context and background that you provided during that. That was very helpful. So thank you for that. Um and then one last question. You mentioned that um I think it was fifty-two percent of the kids qualify for a reduced lunch. How has the uh Healthy School Meals Program rolled out? Have you, I assume it's rolled out. I don't know. And if it has, uh have you noticed any impact or significant change or what have we seen from that and where are we at with that?
We have a lot of student participation there. The state's seen much greater levels of utilization of school lunch and breakfast programs than it had before and that's true of us too. I can't remember if it's breakfast or lunch, but one of them were surpassing even the big state increase in terms of utilization. The other one were slightly behind, but not much. And I think that's part of the reason why the state's now in a little bit of a financial pinch where to continue doing what they've been doing, they're gonna have to allocate more money for it. And we've advocated, I think there was some discussion about to try to balance this out. Should we cut the free meals for the high school age kids and focus on elementary and middle school students? My rep- my belief is that Representative Byrd, as a member of the Joint Budget Committee, was one of the voices that said no. And I was grateful for that. One of the stories I've shared with her is I have a student leadership council that we talk about a variety of issues. And we checked in about how is this whole pre-lunch thing going at your school? And students at Legacy, which is our most affluent high school, said, I don't think there's many kids utilizing it here. There's a lot of students that really look at going off-campus and going to a restaurant as a rite of passage and something they wanna do. So there's really not many more kids using the cafeteria here. And then this girl raises her hand from Northland High School and says, at my school, there's lots of students who can't can't afford to go out to local restaurants to get lunch. They desperately need that assistance at school and our cafeteria is busting at the seams. So we have a lot of times Adams twelve, the tale of two cities school district. We have some schools that have five percent free and reduced lunch and we have schools with ninety percent plus. And we have very different uh needs of our community. And it's nice for those who need it at places like Thornton High School and Northland High School to know that they're still gonna be able to access a free lunch program um and that the legislature's finding a way to fund that.
Great news. Thank you.
I don't have a question anymore. I have a comment. I got to participate in um with the Blueprint Task Force you recently had. And I just thought that that was amazing. There was so much good information. It was efficiently ran. I was really impressed how you integrated technology into that, made it really easy. I just thought that was amazing and I really appreciated uh having the opportunity to take part in that and I I just thought you guys did a fantastic job. So thank you.
Well, thank you for taking part.
Yeah, we were grateful to see you there and there were some colleagues of yours from Northland that were consistently there as well and we just are grateful to have that city linkage to know what we're thinking about and maybe it aligns or doesn't align with what you're doing and gives us some opportunities to be really efficient in how we spend resources.
Thank you. Buddy Bench, love that. I think we need that everywhere. Great idea. The special education vacancies, what has been the impact that you've seen? So you have all these vacancies. So what's happening with the students in need? What are you doing to accommodate the those?
Well, we're obligated by law to meet their needs, so our teachers are doubling up. They're working harder.
Larger-sized classrooms?
Well, not necessarily classrooms, but caseloads. And um you know, they're spending more and more time because you know IP takes a little bit of time to write. So they're 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 spending, they're working more than one full-time job.
I'll just add a few other parts to that too. So for a long time, really strict restrictions that Para would put in place in terms of post-retirement employment for educators. You can do a hundred and ten years, a hundred and ten days a year and that's it. And then because of growing scarcity in terms of educators throughout the state, they moved that to a hundred and forty days, but they'd have some caps on it. And a lot of our a hundred and forty-day post-retirement educators in our system are special educators who are coming in and continuing to earn a full-time salary because we're in just such desperate need. So that's one important part that helps us. The legislature's increased that cap further still this year, which will help us further. A second thing that happens is we wind up using a lot of private contractors to fill those needs. There's third-party basically employment agencies that may have a stable of educators who work with more highly intense special needs of children, or they might be a speech-language pathologist, an occupational therapist, a psychologist, a nurse. We often are hiring people on those roles because we don't have enough people on the employment side to do that. And we're paying a good premium to the employment agency for doing that. So it becomes a more costly way of providing the service. We do, in some cases, have long-term subs in um with the support of an educator who's highly qualified in the area. But it's, I think, the place that's most in crisis in our state. There's a lot of discussion about the shrinking quantity of educators in a lot of areas, but special education is the most acute place. And there are some legislative efforts right now to reduce some of the requirements necessary to become credentialed as a special educator that hopefully in a few years' time will start to increase that supply curve for us again.
Okay, and I'm interested in the, so the achievement gaps. So the graduation rates of your multilingual population versus the Hispanic population and how that compares to the general? What what's what's the, what's happening there?
So like, I think all the districts in our region and frankly through the state and country with rare exception, we we have gaps too very much in terms of white students being the group that most often uh has the highest rates of graduation and achievement. And then Latino students um and students who are multilingual learners and students on IEPs, they all tend to be at lower levels than the white students in our system. One of the things our Board of Education requires us to do is to look at how we're performing against the state and against our past performance and narrowing those gaps. And this last year was one of the best years that we've had on record in terms of narrowing those gaps. We had it on our website. I'll get that link on to you all if you'd like to look at that data more. So we've made strides. It's not good enough yet.
Do we know what the number is?
I don't know those numbers off the top of my head right now.
Okay, um and related to the free lunch program, so Councilor Camelia um that asked that. One of my questions was gonna be to be around that, but I think you answered most of it. So I've been meeting with several different kinds of folks in the education field and they're saying that the free lunch program is not really taking care of the hunger issue. So I was curious. So that I so I think it's dollar ninety per kid, but that has to cover kitchen, that covers food storage and the food and it may not be culturally appropriate, right? So I was wondering what you were doing to, I guess, supplement the low funding that is actually.
So here's my belief, uh and um that doesn't mean that there's not parents and students who might disagree. But my belief is that there's been a really focused effort from our Nutrition Services Department to be culturally sensitive and to have dietary options that are mindful about the various faith traditions and cultural and food traditions of students who come to us from a variety of places in the world. So a few years ago, I heard a student who was, I believe, of the Muslim faith raising concern about some of the food options that we had at one of our schools. And since that time, my belief is that our Nutrition Services Group has developed some new menus that have been responsive to that. So I feel like we've responded to that concern in terms of quantity and quality of food. I'm not hearing from students that there's too little or that it's poor quality and I've spent a lot of time serving lunches and breakfast in meals. Sometimes I'm surprised that it looks as commercialized as it is. You can often grab something that's prepackaged and looks like a little box of cereal or um just things that you'd buy in a grocery store or a convenience store that I would think is too sugary or has too much fat. And yet I know that it meets all the dietary requirements of the FDA and and um the other officials in place. So I think the quantity and quality of food is good. Our biggest gap, I believe, right now is we do have lots of students that when they head home for a dinner and especially into the weekend, there's food insecurity issues that they're working through. Food For Hope is just one of many groups that I know that's leaned into that space. They started serving our community and helping send home weekend bags of food about twelve or thirteen years ago. And I know there's others beyond that. So I feel like we're doing a a good job with partners in terms of meeting that need. The one thing that you've may have seen up on the list of things that we wanna do at Blueprint is to have a central food warehouse and a centralized kitchen so that you can have more fresh food delivered at a lower price and that you have more menu options to make higher-quality things and fewer just heat-and-go sort of options that are currently a good part of our menu.
Okay, and final question. I wanna give you props, but I I don't know if it's you or if it's WPS that has these resource closets. Is that you guys? I think, so I I just heard of this a few weeks ago. An amazing program. Obviously, there are a lot of kids with housing insecurity, food insecurity issues and lack of resources that come to school and need to, you know, be be prepared. So I wanted to thank you for that. May maybe you can give like a quick thirty-second on what that is.
So our Ed Foundation has been a real um guide behind all this and we have them in twenty-two of our schools, I believe. And it's not just clothing, but some of them also have pretty well-established food banks also. And um that kids and their families can go get things that they might need that they that they don't otherwise have. I know that my son's school sends out a memo every week about when Adam's pantry is gonna be open. That's what they call it, ATOM, because it's STEM launch, STEM. And um then they have the resources there for the families to get. And then I think Broomfield Fish also helps out in the Broomfield schools.
Now, part of what I like about it is I think there are times that people give to goodwill, other charities, and it's things that are really important, mission and repair. The things I see in our resource closets, whether it's the clothing or the food, the food isn't just like digging out the old stuff out of your pantry to get it out the door. It's high-quality, highly-desired, culturally-responsive foods. And the clothing, a lot of it looks brand-new. I think some of it is brand-new and donated by various community partners out there. And so it's great for our kids not to feel ashamed and have good clothing that they can wear to school. And if we have them fed and we have them clothed and we have them rested and ready, then there's a lot of amazing things we can do with them once they're there with us.
It's really a game changer for equity and dignity. So thank you guys for that.
I just wanted to say, I too, I work with the Westy Cares Group and I know um The Crossing works with Rocky Mountain. And just for the partnerships that you allow to come in to help those kids, because I know they give, they make a hundred and sixty bag, food bags every week to get over there on Fridays so that kids have food to take home for the weekends. So um and they talk about that school all the time. They're they're as proud as if it was their own kids. I hear about them and then we have another um church that is closer to Ryan and Jeffco. So they made the pantry um and have the clothing and and everything that um. They just felt like um, and I know I've heard this from the Westy kids that are on my yappers um group. And they um just said, it's at school and it's just not as visible and you've, you don't feel like you're being judged if you have to go to the closet to get stuff. So um I just applaud you for being open to whatever those partnerships look like. And um I know they're very proud of, um they tout your school all the time and share everything. And I just have to shout out to Mountain Range. Um you have an art teacher there that gives his heart. And um I'm sorry he didn't win the other night. I I nominated him. But um he is gonna start his program on the twenty-fourth and um get to be with him at the Adams County Awards again with that wonderful young lady that is an amazing artist. I can't wait to see what she did this year, but um you you've just got special people. I know they're in all schools. But um the few that I've been able to to touch with and um get to know you guys, all three school districts are under the circumstances, you are doing yeoman's jobs and sometimes the parents' jobs and we get that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We're lucky to have a generous community. We're lucky to have a faith community that understands that we can't allow proselytization and those kinds of things to go on, but we certainly can welcome in our faith community to clothe and feed and support students. And I'm grateful that they're willing to do that. to clothe and feed and support students, and I'm grateful that they're willing to do that. And thanks for nominating Kyle Limer. He's a special person. Thanks for your longstanding service to our community, Mayor. I was thinking about you as I drove over here today. And I've lived in this North Region my whole life, except for my time going to college and law school. And I've served in this role for a long time, and I just, I don't know that I know a community servant who's served so long and with so much energy as you. I'm just grateful for all you've done for our community.
Thanks. I'm proud to live in Westminster. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Last but not least.
You guys have 10 minutes.
Next time, we'll start with the W's.
We're the closer.
Sounds good.
Knocking out the pride.
Thank you. Well, there could definitely be a lot of ditto's in those presentations. And thank you for all the good work.
Well, good evening, Mayor McNally, members of the City Council, City Manager Freitag, and City of Westminster staff. My name is Jenny Gatto. I am Deputy Superintendent for Westminster Public Schools and have the distinct honor to be, I will be the Superintendent of Westminster Public Schools starting July 1st, as Dr. Swanson steps into her retirement after 39 years of public education service. So have some big shoes to step into. With me, I have Ryan McCoy, our Executive Director of Post-Secondary Workforce Readiness. I'm going to, this slide deck is pulling from Dr. Swanson's State of the District that she does every January, so I'll highlight some of those things. But I speak for her and everyone in our district when I tell you how grateful we are for the partnership that we have with the City of Westminster. So thank you for all the support. We have a very active social media, and just as Mr. Gudowski just spoke to, I think nearly every time something is posted up on social media, Mayor McNally is the first person, one of the very first people to comment. And we so appreciate all the support you provided over the years. So I want to begin by providing just an overview of Westminster Public Schools so you can see our school breakdown. We have shifted some of the questions that came up earlier. We used to be elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. But over the past five or six years, we've shifted to a PK-8 model that's supportive of our competency-based system. So now today, we have three elementary schools, one middle school, 10 PK-8 innovation and magnet schools, two high schools, one comprehensive and one alternative high school, a virtual school that's housed as a part of our alternative school. Dr. Swanson's vision has always been to get them in the womb. And so over the years, we have brought in a number of early childhood centers as we, in Westminster, in a early childhood desert, a childcare desert. So we have our Early Learning Center that is birth-through PK. And then we have one day treatment program, the Instructional Services Center. Our population, we're about 7,600 today. So as you've heard from the other two districts, we are also in declining enrollment because of the things you've heard around birth rates and the reduction in family sizes. We are about 77% Hispanic, 14% white, and 9% other. So a little bit different than what you've heard from the previous districts. We're pretty much the same through and through, where they've talked about kind of the tale of two cities. We are, from one side to the other, very, very similar demographics in each one of our schools. We are 85% for reduced lunch. That has been pretty consistent in the mid-'70s to upper-'70s, but this year we did see a big jump. With that comes a number of different challenges, and that's where these partnerships with the city are so crucial. English language learners, about 33%, and special education, 14%. And that English language learners, as again you've heard from the previous districts, is increasing. We've also been the beneficiaries of a number of our students coming from other countries. So I think we're around 300 this year coming in. So within our student population, that's a significant number that it's tough to plan for because we're not sure if they'll be with us because the price of the homes here is a tough thing for those families. And then staff, about 1,000, and you can see the breakdown there. So central to Westminster Public Schools approach and philosophy is embodied in this picture here. We're about closing opportunity gaps and breaking down those barriers for our students. We believe that every child has potential, and our job is to meet them where they're at and help them to achieve their full potential. When we do a good job of preparing students for what we always often call the day-after graduation, those students are capable of going out and doing their part to make Westminster a stronger, more vibrant community. In January of 2030, our Board of Education adopted our strategic plan, which we reference as Destination 2030. It is built upon these three goals, which Dr. James Duffy, which I believe a number of you have worked with over the years, was kind of the individual that kind of pulled this plan together. And after tonight, because I know we have a long night, I have all the notes for that, but it's been a long evening. So he is available to go into depth on any of these goals. But really, Goal One focuses on student success in and out of our classrooms. Goal Two seeks to position WPS as a public school sector leader in addressing Colorado's most pressing environmental issues. And then our third goal focuses on creating a culture of civic engagement that promotes democracy and produces engaged, informed citizens. So a little bit of academics, and this is my 15th year in the district, and my focus has been on academics. I'm getting more into the other sides as I step into this new role. But a couple of things, we are the largest PK-12 competency-based system in the nation. And what that means is we're not solely focused on that state assessment. So right now, we're in our state assessment window, and that's important. But there's more to educating our children and preparing them for that day-after graduation than just that state assessment. So our program is focused on students demonstrating mastery before we just go to social promotion and moving on based on age. We know that some students are a little bit behind their peers and just need more time, while other students are ready to accelerate at a faster rate. And this system acknowledges both of those. Over time, we believe CBS has proven its worth. And we were on the state accountability clock. When I came to the district in 2009, we were on the clock. And in 2018, we came off of that state accountability clock and had our schools out, as Dr. Gudowski talked about, coming off of the pandemic. And we believe we were the first district to come back in person in the fall of 2020, and we think that served our students very well. And we do just have one school that's on the accountability clock today, and we believe we'll get them back off this year. The other big shift that we're making as we're implementing our Destination 2030 strategic plan is working on a high-reliability organization model. And that model has been developed for schools now. And so really thinking about how we ensure the systems that we put in place across these five levels are, how are we monitoring those and what will we accept that those systems are having the intended impact? So we are working with each one of the schools in the district to achieve certification through Dr. Marzano, who I often, to try and help laypeople understand who he is. He's really the John Elway of public education. And so we have the benefit of being able to work with him actually weekly. And he certifies our schools as they complete these levels. And our goal is by 2030, every school in the district will achieve that top level of competency-based education. We're also going to apply that same model to all of our district-level departments as we move through the next years as well. One other point just to provide is, as the largest K-12 example of competency-based learning, we host a national summit here in Westminster that brings people from across the country into our community. And we get to celebrate the great things here. As part of our efforts to improve academic outcomes, our goal is to attract and retain high-quality employees, one of our highest priorities. And in 2023, we garnered a great deal of press as we were the first district in the state to achieve the $60,000 base and are the highest-paid teachers in the state. In the year two of that, our top pay for any teacher in the district that has a doctorate is they can earn up to $120,000. So we work hard to have that high salary, and not just on our certified side, not just our teachers and our administrators, but we also were able to achieve a $20-an-hour rate for our educational support professionals this past year as well to honor the importance of their work in each one of our schools and in the district. Our employees are our greatest resource, and when the community approved our mill levy override in 2018, we promised taxpayers that we would focus on attracting and retaining high-quality staff, and we are keeping our word on that. I'm going to let Mr. McCoy talk a little bit about some big projects we have going.
So Random Reimagine, and I've noticed the theme, we're all reimagining everything within education. But I will say, WPS is really making an effort to rethink how education is delivered, and delivered across the scale. So when we're talking truly of blurring the lines, if you've heard that concept from JFF, Jobs for the Future, we truly are making an effort to blur the lines between K-12 higher ed and our industry partners. And I would say even within those industry partners, we're also bringing to the table government municipalities. And so the work that we're doing at Random is really a nod to the competency-based system. What people don't recognize or don't realize, but in WPS, Westminster High School, we have 13 different CTE and STEM pathways for our students. Random is an expansion of that. So at Random, we are expanding specific programming that meet, and the question was asked, how do we identify which programs that we're doing? Well, we work with Lindsay Kimball, who I just saw walk in the room over there. We work with Adams County, and we work with industry to identify the needs. When we look at our community and to identify these pathways, everything is based on that thriving wage. Our students are telling us, "We don't know if a four-year degree is really the path we need." We don't see that as a viable option, knowing that I can go get X-Y degree, but I'm going to have to pay student loan debt. And so these are really tough conversations that we're having. So as we blur these lines and have these conversations, we want to identify those needs in Adams County so that our families live here. But what's unique, this is a multi-generational campus. So this will be open to the adult learners. We want to level up everyone. When you drive through the South into Westminster or unincorporated Adams County, you recognize that there are multi-generational households. And as we've gone out into our community, our families are telling us, our community members, they're wanting to see more options such as this. So you could go to the next slide, but because it's just a picture of CTE and some of the stuff that's happening. But the pathways that we will open up, starting in August 2024 at Random, are aviation engineering, biotechnology and biomedical manufacturing, and cyber technology. Again, these are extensions of what we were doing already at Westminster High School. It's just that next level. Some of our partners, though, I think that's important to note, we can't do this without our higher ed partners at the table. So when we talk certificates, that's us talking off-ramps. A student can come in, get an industry certificate, earn concurrent enrollment, and they can go off and get employed if that's what they choose. But through our conversations with Front Range, through Metro, how do we build that seamless pathway? So it starts off in middle school, goes into high school. If the student wants to exit with their high school diploma and a certificate and be employed for a while, they can do that, and let's hope their employer pays for them to continue on. But then that pathway's seamless to Front Range to continue on and/or Metro State. But we're focusing locally, and that's what we really want to ramp up at the Random campus. Random has 25 acres. We have opportunity to grow. And through our work with the City of Westminster and through our work specifically with Adams County and Front Range, I think our conversation is, how do we make this a regional hub? So it's also an economic development driver. Anyone who's in economic development, when they're bringing employees or future employers in, the question they're asking is the pipeline. And being, you know, as small as we are as a district, I think that sort of enables us to be so nimble and adapt so quickly to some of these needs. But it also speaks to the importance of us as government entities to look at the shared resource model. Let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's share where it makes sense. Let's be redundant where it makes sense, and let's scale up in specific pockets where it makes sense to scale up. But it's creating those pathways and those opportunities. And Random has more things that will come down in the future. We know that in 2025, we're looking at expanding advanced manufacturing with Front Range Community College, expanding more health career fields, but really looking at the data and what dictates what we should be doing for these certificates and concurrent enrollment opportunities. What is unique, though, about WPS is we provide the post-secondary options of industry certificates, concurrent enrollment, based on our student numbers and population. The Colorado Workforce and Development Council has recognized us in the top three of our students earning CDIP credentials, so industry certificates before exiting. Go on to the next slide. I think for those of you who know Westminster Public Schools, we really try to meet the need of the community, and we partner with as many entities as we can to do so. At the Diane Vaez Family Education Center, opened this last year. And what a prime time for it to open. The doors opened, and we have all the newcomers who have come in. We have provided resources, have partnered with countless agencies who have come in to help provide services for our families in need. The vision of this and why it was named after Daniel Vaez was one specific thing. He said, "Our students can't excel if their family's basic needs aren't met." And so this resource center is meant to elevate the families and the community around the southeast corner of our district. We are currently partnered with Metro, where we're offering GED classes. We have English and Spanish courses being taught here for families, and so that we can continue to grow collectively as a community. Because our goal is to retain, you know, the families that are here, level them up so that they can afford to be here.
A couple more pieces on the Random, some of the things we heard earlier about the compacting of credits. I think one thing that we're going to look at taking a step further, and we push on the state often at the Colorado Department of Education, but thinking about what are the math skills? If you're going through an engineering pathway, right now, the state defines every student must know and be able to do all the way through Integrated Math 3. Many of us sitting around this table may not have graduated if we expected 100%. But if you are going down one of these pathways, what is the math? And sometimes we're not teaching the math that they need to pass those industry certificates. So we, with our competency-based system, and we define very discreetly for every course, PK-12, every content, we've defined proficiency scales that say, here's what a student needs to be able to do to demonstrate proficiency, to be ready for the next level. But we're going to take that a step further to say, if you're going down this construction path, what are the formulas that are used every single day in math if you're going to be in that pathway? So we're doing a deep dive into that work right now to say, when you take that construction pathway, that at the same time, you're actually not just getting elective credit, but math. So, you know, a lot of the other pieces we've had in place, but this is a step into a new realm that we'll work with our State Department to say, what's keeping doors open for kids, but how do we build some more of that relevance and ensure that math we are teaching allows them to get that certification and to pass those industry certificates at the close of whatever pathway they choose? So we talked about this a little bit already, but obviously, a lot of positive things, but we definitely have some challenges facing our school and education in general. So 113, this is not just unique to Westminster, but 113 of our 178 school districts in the state of Colorado are experiencing declining enrollment. So the birth rates, rising house costs, families are having to relocate. And so as we look at that, we've put together an enrollment task force that just has started meeting in the past month, per our Board of Education, to look at what are some things we can do to attract families to our school district and to sustain and keep them here with us. So we'll be able to share some of that information as that task force completes their work over the next couple of months. So as we wrap up, this says a lot about our partnerships with the district, and I had some other things, but City Manager Freitag already hit on next week's kind of launch of the Arts Week, but also great partnerships with the 15 electrical boxes and being able to have our kids' faces and their families' faces light up as they drive past those and deceive things in action within their community. So this is just one of those collaborative partnerships that you've even spoke about that we so much appreciate and look forward to that continued partnership in the future. So thank you very much.
That was hard to do our Bodhi.
Yeah.
Questions?
I just want to say, I really love the fact that maybe it is because you're smaller and more nimble, but yeah, the energy and the creativity and the true impact in the way that you're shaping the program. in the way that you're shaping the programs is, I really do feel like it's impacting the community now, but for sure in the future, and your focus on the whole family and the community is just really unique. And I just love what you're doing, and I'm so impressed. Thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
I was impressed too with what you're doing at Random, so thank you.
Yeah, I just really appreciate how creative and innovative things are at WPS. It's really exciting. I did have a question around the graduation rates. We covered those for the other two counties. What are our graduation rates?
So Westy High is, I believe it was our eighty-five point seven was our graduation rate for two thousand and twenty-three. And then, again, we have one comprehensive, so typically we look at Westy High. As an alternative school, we know this for many of our students at Hidden Lake Secondary Campus, that we, it's not just Westminster School students. So we accept students from Jeffco, from other districts that need, this is often their last chance. And so our graduation rate there is significantly lower. Their grad rate is thirty-three point nine. But again, the whole premise of the school is that these students are coming under credited, and that's the four year rate. So if we look at their seven year rate, as many students, that is the full intent of that school, is that it's, they're not gonna finish in the traditional four years. Many of the students enter the school as juniors, and their seven year rate as the students persist is fifty-nine point eight. Where if we look at the seven year persist rate, we offer that. Our competency based system is all about giving students the time they need so that you're not moving on to college or that next step before you have the skills. We don't wanna walk students across the stage that don't actually have the background and knowledge to be successful that day after graduation, whether that is their four, five, six, or seven year rates. So our seven year rate at Westy High is ninety-two point six graduation rate.
Thank you. And then another question, it was mentioned, thank you for mentioning the Spanish speaking educators. What does that look like? Is it, you know, because in my head, I'm familiar with the dual, you know, English and then Spanish in the afternoon, but I don't know if we have enough educators in the area to fulfill that kind of thing. So what does it look like?
Similar to what Superintendent Godowski spoke about, we did FM Day was at one point a bilingual school. But finding a staff that your math, your lit, your science, all have that dual language, we also couldn't sustain it. But with our second language population, we have second language teachers, excuse me, we call them culturally linguistic diverse educators. We have those teachers in every single one of our schools. Because nearly every classroom, I probably could safely say every single classroom has second language learners in it. So we don't put them in separate classrooms that they're in this one program. All of them receive services anywhere from twenty to forty-five minutes a day, depending on whether they're fluent English speakers, they're limited English speakers or non-English speakers, plus newcomers. All of those kids get different amounts of services every single day to make sure we're helping them garner that second language, also maintaining their home language as well. But that's in every single one of our buildings.
And then lastly, Random, which I think we're all excited about that. It's such a great opportunity. I don't know if I've ever received clarity around, it seems to fit, can you better explain? It seems to fit between high school and secondary or college, I believe, right? Is there, is there a degree associated or certifications?
We've been in conversation, there's a lot of certificates that we're focused around, so that students build stackable credentials towards if they want an associate's degree or if they wanna continue on to get a bachelor's degree. The, so when you look at it just from the lens, it's truly a nine through fourteen campus, bringing in the community college into that realm. But the other thing that's a caveat to this campus is, we have to create exploration and opportunities for middle school students. So the incubator and maker space that we're creating in there is for those students to come over and get familiar with the equipment, that the equipment they're allowed to play with and work on, but to create that exposure. But it's truly to bridge that gap. Now, in our conversations with Front Range, we've not solidified if we're going a P tech. There's pros and cons to all different paths, but what we're looking at is how do we take advantage of the system for our students through concurrent enrollment? And if that's not the path, because our community college or four-year institution doesn't provide a certificate or that pathway, then how do we do it through an industry certificate to the Colorado Development Incentive Program? And so it's all, all of those have to be aligned. So if a student's on at the campus at Random, they're duly enrolled.
Interesting. I'll just add a comment, maybe, and you probably considered everything. But I happen to have family members who are veterans, and they'll get a skill, let's say, such as carpentry, and that skill doesn't necessarily transfer. And so maybe filling that gap there too, make it so that we can, you know, certify them. That's just one more idea in the many I'm sure you've got.
That's part of the, I mean, the importance of the policy and those conversations where we have those convenings. And we work a lot with RMP, the Rocky Mountain Partnership, and to some extent, in looking at what those barriers are. Because we naturally create our own barriers for students. And, you know, there's things that, of course, I know higher ed wants to do, but it's their accreditation that won't allow it. And but our question is, well, if Industry's going to hire the individual and recognize it, what's the value in that? And that, to me, that's where higher ed needs to change a little bit, and K twelve as well.
Some of our cyber certificates, it's tough to keep our teachers because our students are leaving the day after graduation out earning our teachers. So we have plenty of proof points that this is, for some kids, college and university, we're seeing some mindset shift around that. And that isn't everybody's path. We're gonna continue to have a path for some students that that is where they wanna go. But how do we, one way we're trying to talk about it is, I go to school at Westminster High School or Hidden Lake, I go to work at Random. So they will all be duly enrolled. So they're still gonna get a diploma as they're attending Westy High, but half of their day is gonna be at Random. They'll get the Westy High diploma, so it's not a school per se. It just gives that more real hands-on experience that ties to those content areas as well.
That helps clarify. Thank you so much. And I'll just say, I was just talking to somebody the other night about how exciting cyber is because of exactly that. You can just jump up in two years and all of a sudden, you're, you know, doing your own thing. It's exciting and funny, and I hope we can retain teachers.
Yeah, so thank you so much for coming, and thank you for your presentation. And I love your competency based learning program, and I think you guys are doing wonderful. My question, are you having the same struggles with the educator vacancies that we heard about with the other two?
Absolutely. I think last year, we opened with, I believe it was twenty-six openings for teachers, which then we have, we've had to contract out for special ed, similar to the other districts. So we are looking at every possible avenue, but teachers are covering one another. So it's a reality, I think, across the nation. So again, not just within our districts, but that teacher shortage. We work with Regis University, and we take every single student teacher they have. And our chief of staff, he will sign them. The minute that student teaching is done, we'll sign those teachers on. He goes all over the country to recruit, to try and bring new teachers into our school district. But that teacher shortage is real. And it's, interestingly enough, it's not just in the things we used to think of special ed and second language learners and math and science. We have PE positions open all last year. So it's across all content areas now, a little different than our past experiences, but we're similar. Even with the highest base in Colorado, we still struggle to fill those positions.
I'm assuming it's probably too soon to tell how the teacher pay will affect the retaining educators.
It retains, so I think down the road, but it's not as much of a recruitment tool. If you get into education, you're not getting into it for the money. I can recall back when I went to my job fair, coming straight out of college. And that was not something, as I looked across all the districts that were hiring, for whatever reason, it was just money never even popped in my head. This was not the profession. If that was the thing that drives you, you're not getting into it for that. So as far as it helping with getting, recruiting new teachers, not as much, but retention, you can't leave us and make the money that we pay in Westminster. So it certainly helps on that top end.
Which is almost as important as recruitment.
Absolutely. We put a lot of professional development in this model where we are changing things and having to iterate to meet the needs of our kids. We put a lot of professional development into our teachers. So when we lose them, there's a cost, a significant cost to that.
I just wanna finish off saying, as I've spoken to teachers and people who work in Westminster Public Schools, I think you have a unique culture, and I think it's really beneficial for our students and families. So thank you very much.
Counselor Zadi? I'll pile on and say this competency based system is, I only hear good things. I only see good things. The brand of your teachers is, across the state is very high, you know, the culture. The brand of your culture is very high, and I think that speaks a lot to what you guys have done over the years, not just pay. There's something going on in Westminster that we need to duplicate everywhere else. The one question, I have a few questions. The first question is related to, so is seventy-seven percent Latino, correct? What's the percentage of teachers out of BIPOC?
I should know that. Not nearly that percent, not nearly where we want it to be. So it is, our chief of staff specifically goes to student teacher fairs that are minority fairs so that we can try to garner the, our teachers that look like our students, because that's really important. So I don't wanna tell you the wrong number, and I don't know it right offhand, but we can certainly get that to you. But far, far, far lower than what it should be.
I will say, we are, we do have a program where we're looking to help support staff that we have who are ESP, paraeducators to move on into that to teach at the elementary and secondary levels. And I say that because when you do look at the landscape of our support staff, it's predominantly students or people of color.
So one of the programs at the Vaez Center is that paraeducator to teacher pathway, that I believe it's MSU that we're partnering with to try and provide those opportunities to grow that number.
Makes sense. And when I think about this CBS, is the CBS, is that the acronym, is the system? That system, it's so unique in this state, right? The first is two-part question. The first part is, how prevalent is that system in other states nationwide? And I'll wait for the second part.
Okay. So I'm actually, today, right before I came to this, I'm on a national council that is trying to create the sustainability for it nationwide. There are enabling policies and rules in every single state. I will say, sitting with this council that has members from across the country on it, I'm jealous. I will tell you that Arkansas has, we went and they asked us to come present last year at their state conference where they have a full department at the state level going after this. Utah has a full state department. Wyoming has a full state department. North Dakota, I think North Carolina, there are many, it's in every state. But definitely there are states that have more support at a state level doing the work. But we are invited all over to speak to this, to help other people. One of the things that the HRS process, Dr. Marzano created a framework for how you become a competency based system. We took that and aligned it to our state guidelines, kinda added our own piece to it. And that's something we talk about a lot, because it gives a roadmap. When we started this back in two thousand and nine, there was not a roadmap to do this work. And so now, school districts that are about to go down this path or in the work are reaching out to districts that have done it. And now we can hand them and say, here's a framework to launch your system into it. They don't need to go through everything we went through to try and figure this out, and we don't have everything figured out yet. Every single day, we'll turn over a rock and be like, wow, we can figure this out. We can do this. We believe in continuous improvement. But it has grown to where every single year, more and more states have come on board and have enabling policies. There's a lot of things in Colorado that are not barriers that are in other states, seat time requirements. Colorado, most of that seat time stuff is all local control. Each one of our boards choose how many credits students have to have to graduate. And there's no, we get to decide, there's no hundred and twenty hours this student has to sit in a seat to get a credit. Our board has that control, wherein other, Arkansas was one that, nope, it's a hundred and twenty hours. And until you've sat in a seat for a hundred and twenty hours, no matter if you knew the content in sixty, you will not get credit till that. So we do have some nice enabling policies here in Colorado. The seven year grad rate is another one. If you have a competency based system, but you say there's a finite time, it creates some barriers where our state acknowledges and promotes that it's okay to take more time. Throwing them to colleges where you have to take all those remedial courses that your parents or you are gonna have to fund just doesn't make sense. We can and we do give them the extra time that they need. And as you can see, a number of kids take us up on that opportunity.
Part two of that question. Have you ever conducted sort of a longitudinal study where folks, students who graduate your school, you track them over a number of years, see where they end up, see how successful the system has been, right? Do you have any kind of data around that?
A lot, and I don't know how much Ryan, Ryan's newer with us here.
I'm working on my doctorate in this area.
Okay.
Well, no, I mean, it depends what, we could do a better job at tracking that. I think all K twelve and higher ed, we actually struggle to find our graduates when they exit. I know at one point, I think when I started at Front Range Community College back in the day, there was, Colorado was looking at a common student ID number that would track the student so that we could figure this out. So when they were, wherever they were employed. There are certain mechanisms where we do, whether it's an exit survey or we track the student following one year upon their graduation, but it's specific to CTE programs. But that is definitely something I know the state of Colorado would like to see more of. And with the exception of the National Clearinghouse, that data that you can pull from there, but it's not unique enough to identify the student themselves and what they're doing.
And it's difficult. I was a vocational business teacher as, when I started my career. And I had the, I had the opportunity to call every student. As a vocational teacher, you have to get in touch and figure out when they left your program, how much are they making, did they go on to college? And it is really difficult to find those kiddos. Once they're gone out of that high school and sometimes out of that community to track them down. So we get some data back two years in arrears from colleges, but it's Colorado only. So any student that went out of the state is not included in any of those numbers. So we don't have complete data sets.
I think it would be cool, right, because you focus on the whole child and the whole family and this competency based learning, and comparing that, so the statistical analysis would be fun to compare the results of that years down the line with other kinds of systems, right? And to see the results. My bias view is, it would outshine probably by leaps and bounds various other systems because of the holistic nature, so.
If we dug into those five HRS levels, we actually had a conversation with our State Department today, and a good one, around our Unified Improvement Plan. And the state really looks, in their school performance frameworks that you heard about earlier tonight, they, it's based on one data point. It's based on the CMAS test that we're all taking right now. And so we're pushing with the state, and they're open, to thinking about, HRS Level One is about that social emotional learning, that perception data that is so important. Does your child feel safe? Do they see those future aspirations? And then effective teaching in every classroom, and then the guaranteed and viable curriculum, my personal growth metrics. So looking at more than just this one assessment point that decides whether a student is successful, a school is successful, because there is so much more that plays into being a productive citizen that day after graduation.
Well, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
I have to ask because I always am promoting Wolf Bites. Is Wolf Bites back?
Unfortunately, it's not yet. We're hoping to have a relaunch of that. So Wolf Bites is our food truck that we have and is student operated. Right? And we've, we've just, kinda like if you read Harry Potter, the, you know, the defensive dark arts teacher, where it's just constantly rolling over, we're, we just need to retain the culinary art. And I will say, across the board, every district is looking for this culinary. There's a lot that goes into Pro Start programs and those. And so it's something we're looking at, and we have some people retiring in the district who are like, that's what they want their one ten to be, is to operate that. And I'm like, let's do it. But it is, because it's very well done. Our students designed it, not just the inside, but the outside exterior, the multimedia. Our students designed it, not just, not just the inside, but the outside exterior, the multimedia graphic design and our students put it together. So once it gets up and functioning, we'll make sure that Dr. Duffy allows us to go out and do it. We give him a hard time.
So many people ask, what's a good food truck? And so I just like, yeah, telling people about it. But I'll wait until I hear it's back in the loop.
Well, and I know we had a, put, fix some of the equipment within it, but it's fixed. We just, we need a driver and we need an instructor to launch it now, so.
Stephanie's raising her hand to hell.
All right.
All three of you districts, your passion, your love for the kids, it just shines. And so it's easy when I see something come out on Facebook to love it and then share it because people need to know what you're doing. And I cannot wait for, is it going to be an August opening?
Yeah, you know, I'd invite everyone, I like doing the pre-tour, like before the equipment's in there and when it's still dusty and stuff along those lines. So I'll work with Mark and team and we can schedule a time to walk through to see it beat up. But again, it's a 200,000 square foot facility and we've only touched 50,000 square feet at this moment. And so for those who may know Random, my dad graduated from Random. And so when he walks through it, I mean, it looks, even though it's a 1961, it was constructed in 1961. I mean, it, it's definitely looks quite different than what we're going to deliver.
Exciting times ahead. So thank you and we will see you next week at the roast.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's take a five or 10 minute break.
Can, before we do that, can we read the executive title?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Out to that tour. Yeah, sure. That would be fun.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
I was in Arkansas.
Do we have reason for an executive session?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there are two executive sessions agendized for tonight. The first executive session is to discuss strategy and progress on a proposed lease for the city-owned property at 3915 West 783rd Avenue and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 2464024E1 and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C4 and 7.
Okay, I will go around the table and ask you to give your name and if you're willing to go into executive session.
Obie, is that a yes?
Amberhot, yes.
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Christine Ireland.
Sarah Narmala, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
And the second executive session that's on tonight's agenda, Mayor, is to discuss strategy and progress on a proposed economic development agreement involving a new business to be located at the Orchard Town Center and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 2464024E1 and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C4 and 7.
I'm going to ask you to give your name and if you're willing to go into executive session.
Obie, is that a yes?
Amberhot, yes.
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Sarah Narmala, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Over from the live stream to a new recording.